All right. Good morning. Welcome to. Welcome to the June 20, 2023 meeting of the Trinity County Board of Supervisors. We will begin this morning with our flag salute and Supervisor Fraser will lead us. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have one supervisor ill this morning and another one who is out of the state. So the three of us are here. That means there will be a couple of items when we get to our consent calendar that we'll need to call out because they require four fifths spoke with everything else we can move forward. We're going to take our presentations out of order this morning. We will start with our Child Support Services, which is item 1.2. Adopt a proclamation of appreciation recognizing Staff Service Analyst 2 Diane Dara upon her retirement from Trinity County and North Coast Regional Department of Child Support Services. Would you like to come while we read your presentation? Thank you. It's nice to see you this morning. Thank you. A proclamation of the Board of Supervisors of the County of Trinity, Retirement of Diane Dara. Whereas Diane Dara started with Trinity County's Department of Health and Human Services on June 3, 1991 as an Administrative Clerk 1. And whereas Diane promoted to Administrative Clerk 2 before becoming an Account Clerk 1 on May 1, 1992. Whereas Diane promoted to Account Clerk 2 before promoting to Account Technician 1 on January 1, 1996. And whereas Diane worked her way through Account Technician 2 before promoting once again to Senior Account Technician for the Department of Health and Human Services on October 1, 2001. And whereas on January 1, 2016, the North Coast Regional Department of Child Support Services was formed between Trinity and Humboldt Counties, making Diane Dara a dual employee. And whereas Diane promoted to Staff Services Analyst 2 for NCRD-CSS, utilizing both her attention to detail and advocacy skills to ensure both counties tracked and reported accurately to the state of California. And whereas Diane, having deep roots in Trinity County, promoted child support regularly through community outreach events such as the annual fair, the Children's Festival, the Witches Brigade. And whereas Diane's dedication to caring for others resulted in her spearheading Child Support's Internal Safety Committee in Weaverville and providing leadership, creative presentations, regular safety exercises, and unparalleled support. And whereas Diane's loyalty to the public service has been reflected for years in the quality of her work. And whereas fellow team members of the North Coast Regional Department of Child Support Services respectfully request to honor Diane's time, effort, and passion for her work. So now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Trinity hereby expresses gratitude to Diane Dara for her dedication to the North Coast Regional Department of Child Support Services through providing equitable support for our two communities. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors wishes Diane Dara a peace-filled but lively, well-deserved retirement. Duly passed and adopted this 20th day of June, 2023 by the Board of Supervisors of the County of Trinity.
I'll move to accept as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Supervisor Fraser, second by Supervisor Lou Wiler.
Supervisor Lou Wiler.
Aye.
Supervisor Fraser.
Aye.
Chairman Cox.
Aye.
I also have Bennett online if he would like to say something.
Yes. Good morning, Supervisors. Thank you so much for this proclamation honoring Diane. I'm Bennett Hoffman. I'm the Director of Child Support Services for North Coast, which serves Humboldt and Trinity Counties. I just want to thank Diane for her support and her service to the department for the last 32 years to the county, but the Department of Child Support Services is so grateful for the work that she's given us, especially the last few years. As we've lost institutional knowledge and directors and assistant directors have come and gone, Diane's been a stable force in our department. She's responsible for all of the fiscal work and the budgets for both Trinity and Humboldt County. She's responsible for making sure we meet all of our state requirements, which are extensive for budgets, and I just can't be more pleased with the work that she's done over the last couple of years. We're really going to miss her. She's going to leave a big hole in our department. We won't be able to replace that expertise or her work ethic, her knowledge, how conscientious she is. But I'm extremely happy that she finally gets to move on to this stage in her life. So I just wish her the best and we're really going to miss you Diane. Thank you.
Nice. Thank you, Bennett. Appreciate you joining us this morning. Diane, this is quite an extensive list of things that you have done for the county over the years, and I'm sure it was a reflective journey down memory lane as we read each one of those. But we wish to very much express our gratitude to you for all of your effort for what you have given to the county and the love that you have put into all of the work that you have done. So we do wish you a wonderful retirement.
Thank you.
I'll do it. Yeah, he's a talk ass. Okay.
All right. On our agenda, item 1.3, we will receive an update from the U.S. Forest Service Representative regarding matters of interest in Trinity County. And today we have with us our Deputy District Ranger, Ben Suntall. Thank you for joining us.
Okay. So quick update on Forest Service activities in Trinity County. So let's just start with fire. So most of you, at least all of you, have received emails either from myself or Tara on the status bar fires. About nine fires over the last two to three weeks, all supposedly lightning caused fires. The last fire that was detected was the Valley Fire in Indian Valley off the Lime Dyke Lookout Road. That one, late popper. Winds started picking up and kind of pushed the smoke above the tree line for the lookout to find it and the aerial detection unit, our recon flight. So that one was stopped at about an acre. So good response to the engines, the helicopter, and the dozer on that fire. Currently, all fires are out. The Valley Fire is in containment status, but looking really good. No heat, no smokes. So that should be called out here shortly. So good collaborative effort between Fed Engines, and then we've also brought on some contract engines as well to supplement our staffing. So good resource response on the Fed side and on our contractor side that are helping us out. So over to staffing. So some of our, one of our long-term battalion chiefs, Jimmy Akub will be retiring at the end of the month. If you guys know Jim, Jim is the Battalion Chief Downriver Battalion 3-1. He's been on the Shasta-Treyni National Forest for quite a number of years. With his retirement end of the month, Josh Wright, another longtime Downriver employee and resident, will be assuming the duties of Battalion 3-1. Josh is currently a swing battalion out of the Headquarters Office, but spends most of his time up here covering the battalion duty shifts, knowing that Jim will be departing us in a week or two. So congrats to Jim on a long career with the Forest Service and many more years of happy retirement. We also brought in Cheval Monk. Cheval Monk is Battalion 4-1 on the Weaverville side. Cheval replaces Brian Fabry, who retired late last winter. So Cheval Monk used to be Battalion 2-1 on the Hayfork side. He has now switched over to the Weaverville side and is now Battalion 4-1. Backfilling behind Cheval in Weaverville, we have Jason O'Bannon. Jason O'Bannon is detailed Battalion 2-1 out of Hayfork. And he is currently in that detail for the next four months. I think he has about two and a half, three months left on that detail. And during our next round of fire hire this fall, we look at, we are looking at replacing or hiring those vacancies. So good job with all the fire suppression resources tackling those fires. I'll throw out there, we also used helicopter 506, the smoke jumpers out of Reading. We actually jumped out Reading, so we had brought in smoke jumpers from Redmond as well. Boise and McCall. I think each of those individuals were able to get fire jumps on the Shasta-Treyni as well. So congrats to them. Moving over to fuels, the Trinity IRSC bids are being accepted currently. Proposals will be reviewed the week of June 26 next week. And this is a very large Integrated Resource Service Contract aimed at completing fuels work this summer in the August complex footprint. Consisting of down trees on the 16th Road and work in the Petty John Project area. For prescribed fire on the west side between the South Fork Management Unit and the Trinity River Management Unit, we were able to accomplish roughly 1,000 acres of prescribed fire in a very difficult season based on the weather and how wet it was. The prescribed fire acres are a combination of pile burning and broadcast burning, the broadcast burning specifically within the Weaverville Community Forest. This fall and into the future, the west side has been approved, and when I say the west side, I mean the South Fork Management Unit and the Trinity River Management Unit, we've been approved to add a 10-person fuels module. So that 10-person fuels module will be tasked with taking on fuels work, whether it's mechanized fuels reduction or pile burning, broadcast burning. That 10-person fuels module will be a standard module within our organization. So it's all funded off the top with appropriate dollars. So that's great. This fall, fire hire, we plan on hiring the leadership positions first. And then the next round of hiring the meat and potatoes of the crew, the crew members. So hopefully in early '24, that whole crew will be up and running, that 10-person crew on the west side. So that's, that's pretty exciting news. Mechanized fuels reduction work continues or will continue in the Weaverville Community Forest this summer. And more on that once Tim Ritchie gets back into his seat. He was on vacation as well as his family over the last week and a half. So more to come on that. The timber, the Lake Timber Sale will be offered in the fourth quarter of this year. So coming up here shortly, the timber sale is associated with the Petty John Project. We are actively laying out treatment errors for hazard treatment mitigation under the Region 5 Hazard Tree NEPA document, which has been recently signed. We hope to offer a couple of small sales from that NEPA document. We're also working on a package to package the pilot project, which is out of Hayfork, and the remaining treatment acres on West Side Plantation. We plan to get into a contract agreement hopefully early October. On the planning side of things, the Hyam Palm project or Hyam Palm scoping will be out soon. We'll be working with community members and the Watershed Center to plan a post-fire treatment in the Junction City area. Berman Project had a public field trip. Input from that field trip will be incorporated into the project design. And Weaverville Community Forest Phase 2 and August Phase 2 should be finalized within the next month or so. Both are just went on a few documents or specialist reviews from external parties. So those are still moving forward and we see the light at the end of the tunnel with those two. Open house meetings. Did you guys get the open house calendar by chance from our PAO shop?
I believe so.
Okay. If not, I can read the dates off.
Go ahead and read the dates.
Once I flip through this next few topics. Remind me if I forget. So we will be having multiple open house meetings coming up at the end of this month. I think the first one is tomorrow here in Weaverville on the 21st. We'll be putting up local flyers for these meetings in our PAO shop out of Reading is also posted on social media to cast that wide net. We really poured out on what we have accomplished since our last meetings and what we are working on for this year and over the next three to five years. And then we'll also be taking questions and input from the local communities and the public. We look forward to these meetings to make sure we stay connected with the communities that we serve. Shared stewardship. We continue to strengthen our partnerships to help us increase our pace and scale and to achieve true shared stewardship. Currently, the Trinity County Collaborative Fuel Trip at the Big Ranch in Junction City on 6/23, which is this Friday, Tara will be leading. They'll be looking at those project areas. Regular and current meetings, RCD and Watershed Center continue. And the Good Neighbor Agreement is processing through grants and agreements and is expected to be completed soon. So that's exciting as well. We are working closely with the Six Rivers National Forest to successfully implement treatments on the Trinity County landscape that reduce risk to our communities and improve forest resiliency. And then on recreation, I think the big thing on recreation right now is we continue to fight hazard trees and are developing recreation sites. It seems like every day we go out there, we see more and more dying trees. And we currently, over the weekend, I think it happened on Thursday or Friday, we closed East Weaver Campground due to the hazard trees actually dropping dead limbs into the campground. So for safety of the public and users of that site, we closed it with our partners and folks are in there mitigating those hazard trees as we speak. So.
Did you say that was East Weaver?
East Weaver Campground, yep. So we are looking at long-term solutions for this issue, just trying to stay up on pace with it, not try to let that get too far ahead of us. This includes addressing forest health and resiliency issues in these campgrounds during our planning process. Trinity Camps, Berman, and Big Ranch will all address forest health and resilience in our campgrounds. But it is going to be a big, big undertaking to try to stay on pace or ahead of the dying trees right now in our forest. So circling back to the open house schedule, so June 21st, tomorrow here in Weaverville at the Weaverville District Office, start time is 17:30. June 24th will be in Hyam Palm at the Hyam Palm Community Hall, and that is the Saturday, and that start time is 10:00 a.m. June 28th will be in Harrison Gulch at the Ol' Bola District Office on Highway 36, start time of 17:30. June 29th, Hayfork VFW Hall, start time 17:30. July 6th, Junction City at the Forest Service Fire Station, start time 17:30. July 8th, Burnt Ranch at the Burnt Ranch Forest Service Fire Station. This one might also include a possible field trip, and that start time on July 8th is 10:00 a.m. And then July 11th, start time 17:30, Coffee Creek at the Coffee Creek Forest Service Fire Station. And that is the current open house schedule for the TRMU and South Fork Management Units to engage with our local communities and public. Any questions?
Message may have not gotten through, but I had reached out to Sarah and Tara to see if any update could be provided about the lake and the docks and so forth, because we had some folks reaching out about information about when some things would be placed as the water comes up. Did they happen to get anything to you?
I haven't seen anything, but as I scroll through here, I know Sarah's going to give an update at the Rotary regarding some of that stuff. Looking at her email thread, let me go to this one. It looks like the boat ramp in Trinity Center, those permits expired, so we need to circle back and reevaluate that. And then, so right now the focus is on Minersville. With BOR, the contractor, with their contractor to repair the damage caused by their project to restore the site to a full three-lane boat ramp. So we're working with BOR to repair Minersville Boat Ramp to back to its original three-lane condition. So yeah, it looks like the consensus is focus on Minersville and then Trinity Center. They're aware of it, but due to short staffing and just priorities elsewhere, knowing that both permits have expired with Job Corps, they will reevaluate that when they get some of their priorities knocked off their list. But Sarah will be at Rotary, and hopefully Sarah and Tara get back to you with more concrete visioning on Trinity Center when they kind of discuss it more in depth.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, Ben, thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me.
Appreciate your efforts and all that you and others do. So yeah, and we are all praying for a safe summer.
Yep. Yeah, it's nice and cool right now. So let's keep it that way. It's a nice summer.
Exactly.
Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you. All right. Item 1.1. We will now receive a presentation from Associate Superintendent Kevin O'Rourke. These are folks from Shasta College. Appreciate them making the drive and being here today. Kevin is the Associate Superintendent. We also have with us Yana Yachridis. She is the Associate Vice President of Economic and Workforce Development. And also Angela Cordell, who is the Associate Dean of Economic and Workforce Development. And they have some exciting things to share on that front, but also regarding enrollment trends, the Measure H bond funds, and then also on these economic workforce development updates as they relate to Trinity County and the Shasta College Trinity Campus. Thank you for being here. Hope your journey over the mountain was enjoyable this morning. It was beautiful early in the morning. So thank you for being here.
Thank you. We appreciate it. And so a couple of things before we start into the presentation. First is thank you for the time that you put into what is already very long agendas. I see these county supervisors meetings. And so this was designed to go about 15, maybe 20 minutes, but each slide we have more information that we could bury you with. So if there's anything that is of more interest to you, please let us know and we will give you whatever information that you need. The second thing that I wanted to do, since I've met with a couple of you already, is just thank you for your positive advocacy for students in your area. It's absolutely clear that you're passionate about the youth in the area, educational opportunities for them and how it interacts with our college. And so you've been extremely professional, and so I just wanted to thank you for that. And third, probably the most important thing, if there was a gist to what our presentation is beyond some of the specifics that we share in the PowerPoint, is that Shasta College has recently undergone a reorganization at the college. We're developing new strategic plans. And a part of that is what I believe are going to be incredibly large benefits to the Tahima Campus and to the Trinity Campus. And so one of the most important things is that the extended education sites have now become a division of their own. Okay? And that's really important because before they were just kind of tucked under some of these other primary divisions. We are now our own division that is going to bring us much more financial resources and human resources, and we will be very well positioned to fight, I shouldn't say the word fight, to happily compete for resources that come into our counties. And so Yana, Angela, and myself are all in brand-new positions. And that just speaks to the dedication, I think, of where we see the future and the importance of our extended education sites. So if we want to go ahead and start. So the next slide just kind of shows from Measure A, which was in the early 2000s. That was used to build our Trinity Campus. I know most of you have been out there. Go to the next one. And then speaking to the most recently Measure H, so if I'm a citizen of Trinity County, I want to know, hey, we voted in the affirmative for this bond, where are some ways or what are some things that our students from Trinity Campus are benefiting from this? And so what we did was we kind of had our research office do some migration patterns for students that had zip codes over the past two years from Trinity County and what it looked like on their day-to-day. And this is what basically was the picture that appeared. So these are all facility upgrades. Oops. Sorry. So these are all facility upgrades that are used most by the Trinity County students or those students that had a Trinity County zip code or used to have one in the prior year and then potentially moved maybe somewhere else like to Reading. Our regional public safety training facility, it is one of the best in the Western United States. It just led us to a very nice contract for CAL FIRE. CAL FIRE is now going to have a third training facility and equipment facility that will relate to quicker response times to fire in our area, and it will offer state-of-the-art training. So a lot of our Trinity students are using that facility. Our career and technical education training facilities, we took a lot of the bond money and we upgraded programs like welding, heavy equipment. They're going to talk a little bit about some of our logging programs, but we saw heavily that there was a bulk of students coming from Trinity County that were enrolled in these CTE programs, which quite frankly are some of our best programs. When you talk about getting a job afterwards, a quick story, we got a call from the Chancellor's Office a couple of years ago. They were worried why our welding students were not graduating. And they were really kind of putting their finger at us for not graduating those students. We had to explain to them, they were getting jobs making $80,000, $90,000 for their graduation, convinced a 19-year-old not to take that job can be difficult. So so it was a good thing. And then another thing that popped up in our migration for Trinity areas, there was an impressive number of students that are veterans or currently military that were using our Veterans Center, accessing help with getting their financial aid filled out for GI Bill and also taking advantage of the Veterans Counseling and the other support services that are there, such as career counseling, things like that. So go with the next one. So as you know, the Measure H, the bulk of the money went into technology upgrades. Things are moving extremely fast in higher ed right now in regards to requirements around technology. And so we put a lot of resources into upgrading technology firewall replacements in the Trinity Campus. That does not just mean higher speed, it means more protection for your students' data, personal information, social security numbers, records, things like that. But we also had to integrate that with course switch upgrades in the Shasta County. These all kind of interconnected. What that means is there's now 10% faster Wi-Fi going through, and I can show you on the next slide kind of a physical picture that caught my attention was that we went from was that we went from a uh, a coffee stir conduit to a ten foot conduit providing three hundred and thirty times more throughput. So that is the actual size of the conduit they got put in there. We went from three megabytes per second to a thousand megabytes per second, so. Internet access in rural areas is very challenging. And so the idea was we wanted a location where if somebody could get to that location, if they did not have access at their home, they would have strong reliable internet access. So moving on to the next one, this is a snapshot of two two thousand nineteen. So kind of pre pandemic enrollment, if you will, the last time we were offering what was called ITV courses. So that means you go into a class, you sit down at a particular time and you're in an interactive television setting with other students that may be Bernie, Trinity, Reading, et cetera. And what we wanted to highlight was just on the right hand side, there was some pretty low enrollment uh, rate rates there. So what we wanted to do was ask the students, you know, what is your preferred method? And this is where I kind of, my own personal way of wanting to to learn and go to college, I think was um, more kind of old school, what I would suggest. I like to go to a class, sit down. But some of the times and days, um, we're providing students who had jobs and employment in Trinity Campus challenges to meet those. And so uh, as you move on to the next slide, um, you will see what we were trying to do is step one, increase our dual enrollment in Trinity High Schools, okay? And so as you can see here, um, on that, oops, not showing up on the laser pointer. But the enrollment trends for dual enrollment uh, really fluctuate and they swing because of the low numbers in Trinity High School. So you could have a really good year, then you could have a bad year. And a lot of that depends on uh, you could have one key retirement from an area or a class that was enrolling a lot of students. But this to us is the key. If Trinity High School students can get uh, their high school classes checked off that they need to graduate and at the same time, at no cost to them, because there is no cost, um, get college credit. And by the time that they graduate from high school, if they already have twelve units knocked out, A, some of those students may not have thought that college was the next step, but now they do. Uh, B, more importantly, that's going to save them time and energy when they do enroll at the college. So the next couple of slides, um, it just kind of shows you what it looked like at Hayfork, Hayfork High School. Actually, we we've been working really well with them and we have a big uptick um, in um, in partnering with them. We have a whole dual enrollment office that is um, going to uh, continue to work with them and increase the number of students uh, in Trinity County. So the next one. Now getting directly just to the Trinity Campus itself. Um, the model that is kind of emerging is more of this Zoom model. Um, internet offerings, we are going to start offering more in person classes and I'll I'll go with those in a little bit. But what we wanted to do um, is make sure that there was onsite as many hours as the Trinity Campus is open. If students or prospective students wanted to come in there, get help filling out financial aid, get help registering, getting help with an educational plan. Uh, going through the whole uh, financially uh, gone that that can be overwhelming at times. Is that there would be in person, onsite, human being, one on one interaction. And so um, that is what the students told us that was most important to them. And um, this is where we're going to put our resources um, over the next couple of years. And then um, as you go on to the next one. Um, again, uh, just some other updates. Uh, the Basic Needs Center um, is money that we receive from the state. Uh, basic needs can be in the form of food. Uh, if students uh, are not, have a lack of nutrition, uh, so we are setting up a food bank in there for students. And there are also maybe some other monies available in the form of gas vouchers, things like that. So all those things will support things that sometimes we don't think of that you need before you can start concentrating on school. Uh, the Smart Center, I don't know if you've heard, has moved in um, to this. This is a wonderful partnership that we think is going to help uh, as we launch students into the workforce. And then as I said, we're going to start adding back some in person classes. The first one uh, in the fall is our E M T class. There's a high number of students coming from Trinity County uh, going into our E E M T program. And so uh, that is a good first step recovering out of the pandemic towards offering some in person classes. This is student traffic. Again, we can, you can go to the next one. If any of this stuff that you want, um, let me know. So uh, now I'll turn it over to Yana and she'll talk a little bit about how the Economic Workforce Development Department, you know, ties into what uh, we're doing in the Trinity area. Actually, I don't think she was clicking.
Were you clicking for me?
Yeah.
No, thank you, Ashley. My turn. Good morning. Thank you for having me. I am Yana Yatridis. I am the Associate Vice President of Economic Workforce Development. And you're probably wondering why is economic workforce development in a college? Well, in nineteen ninety six, it became part of our CCC Community California Community College statutory mission. It's an ed code. Because the idea is that we are responsible to make sure that what we're teaching to is to industry standard. And so we developed this partnership now with industry, both the public sector and the private sector, to make sure that we have this dialogue that we are educating to industry need. So we have developed this partnership now with our employers where we invite them to come into advisory committees and tell us exactly what it is that they need and we tell them what we are teaching and we end up engaging in this partnership. So the beauty is, is that we then try to engage our employers in becoming part of a work experience education. To offer internships, job shadowing opportunities, come into our classrooms and be guest speakers and of course ultimately hire our students. Can I have the next slide? So as Kevin alluded, what part of our responsibility is to make sure that we are providing the technical knowledge and skills in order to be able to prepare our students for careers in these emerging sectors. And as you see, we have a suite of programs that we're offering. Accounting and Business Administration is one of our big ones. Of course, all of our agriculture farm, agriculture, diesel and automotive technology. I actually gave him my car. I gave him my poor little Lexus when it died. It was like, here you go, you know? Um, and uh, and now I look at, they've taken it apart, they put it back together again, they're doing all sorts of wonderful things. And by the way, if you have any old equipment, we'll take it. Um, computer information systems, early childhood education is one of our biggest programs. Industrial arts, that's where welding fits in. Health sciences, I was the dean of health sciences, is near dear to my heart. Can I tell you, you know, we had at the time of COVID, we were cranking out the nurses as far as we, fast as we could crank them out. Uh, dental hygiene, physical therapy assisting, full allied health suite. Um, and it is a fabulous career for anyone who is interested in the health and safety of our community and of course, public safety. We offer programs and I I'm going to get to apprenticeship and pre apprenticeship. I haven't skipped it on purpose. So we offer programs both for credit, but also for non for credit. Non for credit is wonderful way that that adult learners can go back and kind of reenter their education. And and i- it allows an opportunity for adult learners to either go back and get their GED. Or we have programs where they can kind of dip their their toe in and see whether or not this is a career for them. You know, in terms of exploration, it allows immigrants to be able to um, have um, English as a second language courses or do citizenship classes. Um, and it also provides programs for 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 immigrants who want to come in as professionals and now want to get their licensure in the United States. So for example, if I have an accountant from Poland, right, and they would like to serve as a bookkeeper or an accountant here in the United States, they have an opportunity to be able to take courses. We also have earn and learn models and one of them is apprenticeship and pre apprenticeship. And I'm going to yield the floor now to Angela Cordell, who is our Associate Dean of Economic Work- Workforce Development and is responsible for our apprenticeship and pre apprenticeship programs.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Thanks for having us. Um, so yes, one of the programs that I oversee is our Office of Apprenticeship. And uh, we started with our logging apprenticeship program. And kind of speaking to what Yana was mentioning about listening to our industry, really that program was born out of um, industry knocking on our door and saying we have a great need for workers in the logging industry, in the logging space um, across the state, not just here in our local area. Um, and as most of us who live in this area know, logging is one of those industries, one of those skills that's passed on from generation to generation, right? It's not necessarily something, well, it's not. We looked into it. There's no, there was no curriculum on record. There was no other program in the United States that met the needs of uh, our industry partners who were saying people are retiring. People want to retire, they desperately want to retire and we have no one to replace them. And so um, we partnered with a number of entities, primarily uh, CalFire. Who gave us a large grant to be able to purchase heavy equipment. Um, we worked with SPI. They donated land to us to build an outdoor classroom so that our students would be able to practice in the woods on heavy equipment. Um, and then the Department of Apprenticeship Standards, so just kind of taking a wider lens, uh, DAS has invited the community colleges to participate in the development of non traditional apprenticeship programs. And so it's taken a couple of years now and still I can see the the questions on people's faces when I talk about registered apprenticeships, because we all kind of have a traditional sense of what those are. Um, but in fact, DAS recognized that there's a huge benefit to creating these. I call apprenticeships like the godfather of earn and learn programs, that folks are working while they're learning and attending school. Ultimately, my goal is that we see an earn and learn program across every discipline at Shasta College. Um, we're working on building one with our early childhood education program right now. We've had conversations with our manufacturing folks, again, trying to avoid that challenging decision for a student. I'm halfway through my advanced manufacturing certificate that I just got offered a seventy, eighty thousand dollar a year job. What do I do? They shouldn't have to make that decision. They should be able to do both for a year and complete their certification and be working. So um, so DAS worked with us, um, and we were able to build our um, our craft apprenticeship program. Hilo, which is our entry level heavy equipment and logging program, um, is our pre apprenticeship program to craft. Uh, again, listening to industry, it was a one year program and industry said, timeout. Well, industry and students said shorter, we need to get to work as quickly as possible. So this year, um, we turned it into a six month certification program. We had our first two out of state students come for those six months to learn and then head back home. So we're very proud of that. We will be launching a pre apprenticeship in customer service, which we hope will be applicable to just numerous industries and numerous businesses across the district. I think I have one more slide. Oh yeah, because I went in reverse. Sorry about that. All right. Um, and then finally, our accounting uh, services employment training program asset. So that's our accounting, bookkeeping, registered apprenticeship program. Both of those programs are logging and accounting, which they sound so disparate, right? But accounting, our accounting apprenticeship was actually born out of our logging apprenticeship program. Our loggers said, well, by the way, we need bookkeepers. Uh, and we, we looked at the data and we talked to our industry partners and indeed all of our industry partners are looking for uh, entry level accountants and bookkeepers. So we la- launched Asset this last semester and uh, both programs are looking for new apprentices and participating businesses as we speak. And I don't know if we have another slide after this. Oh, very quickly, I will just mention, so some of you saw probably even um, in the paper a few months ago. We have uh, career services in the district. The kind of location is the Career Cafe, but our Career Cafe team does come up here in person to Trinity County um, to meet with students and will come up at any time to meet with students by appointment. If they'd rather meet in person instead of via Zoom. Um, we're doing the same in Trinity County as well. As we grow our team at the Career Cafe, our goal is that we will have some more permanent in person services and some more regular in person services here in Trinity County as well. And next.
Okay. Can I have a question for you? So the customer service.
Yeah, yes.
Two things. One is, is that available up here or do the kids need to go or whoever, kids, adults, go down to another location?
Yeah, so it is available here. Yes, um, well, let's clarify. By here, do you mean in person here?
Oh, just however they can participate from up here, yeah.
It's all, yes. Uh, um, everyone can participate from Trinity County in all of the programs that I just described. So the related supplemental instruction, which is the classroom portion of an apprenticeship program for our accounting and for customer service. One hundred percent of that is delivered online. So anyone can participate from anywhere. For logging, obviously, we have a different, um, RSI is a little bit different, but those are non credit classes. Um, and those take place around workers' schedules, so it's not necessarily plugged into that traditional si- uh, semester model.
Second question is, um, because I used to be in this world where we had thousands of people doing the customer service uh, phone jobs all over the world.
Okay.
Um, I sense that artificial intelligence is going to make a huge difference here. Is that something you're already starting to incorporate into your programs?
Yes, and working to highlight for folks that there are certain key pieces of customer service in particular that cannot be replaced by AI. And um, the the goal of this particular program is that it will not only kind of prepare folks who are in those traditional customer service positions where customer service is in the title of the job or in the job description, but that actually it will be a great entry level training program for anyone who's going to be working with other people. So basic communication skills, basic conflict resolution, basic time management. It's really life skills, uh, essentially and and workforce skills.
That's great. I I I'm just excited because um, we've been trying to gear up a lot of economic development efforts here for Trinity County. And we are seeing momentum with that.
Good.
Um, but when I saw this, it reminded me that probably twenty years ago, the company I was with, we flew into winter South Dakota with a population of three thousand people and opened up a call center and employed three hundred people. So we employed ten percent of the entire population because we could train people up to do these kinds of jobs, which can be done from anywhere. Uh, we're in the midst of getting better internet service up here through the, all the programs that are going on. Uh, we have some empty facilities, so I I start to connect all these dots and knowing that this kind of a program is available is exciting. So thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
And actually Supervisor Luviler, you bring up a good point, because one of the programs that we also have is uh, Health Information Technology, my bachelor program, Health Information Management, and that's all online. So that is open, you know, there are fabulous jobs to be able um, in the healthcare industry. Shasta College also employs nine employer partnership uh, directors. And the one that is assigned here to Trinity is actually Molly Stimple. You may have met her. Uh, she has been up on several of the mixers and so forth. Uh, she comes up here quite frequently. In fact, I think she's been here with Angela, the chamber mixer, the other uh, you know, a a couple of weeks ago. But um, her responsibility is primarily to develop these partnerships that we have with industry so that our students have the opportunity to be able to have internships and job shadow opportunities and ultimately employment. Career Cafe is really important for us because Career Cafe is there to also teach our students how to interview. And not only how to interview and do their cover letters and resume, which is very important, but the soft skills in terms of how to maintain their job. There are some, some of our students are not really aware of basic things such as showing up on time. If something happens with the car, pick up the phone and call somebody. I know it sounds like silly basic things, but it's things that they need to be taught. And that's one of the things that we are determined to be able to teach them so they can be successful. Thanks for you, Kevin. Thank you for having me. Thank you.
We can go through these last ones very quickly. Um, as a matter of fact, why don't you just? This is a grant that we have called North Stay Together. I just kind of wanted to clu- uh, close on some good news. You can flip through the next two or three slides. Uh, I can send you more information about that, but the the gist of it is we received a grant from the state and the focus is on K sixteen, so anywhere through that pipeline. And that is basically the bullet points that I wanted to show. So we'll be taking one million dollars from that grant and sending it to Trinity County over the next four years. And the good news about these funds is you will locally be able to determine how you want to spend those through, uh, I think you've uh, had uh, Tekla Johnson here before from uh, Trinity Together. And so um, you know, her charge is to make sure there's get as many voices as there can be at the table, including all viewers uh, leaders in the um, in the allocation of these funds and where we think that they're the best, best suited for uh, for the Trinity students. And so I think that's the last slide. So anyway, uh, the the two takeaways are this. One, I just wanted to thank you for your advocacy again for the Trinity County students. It's it's very clear and you're professional. It's, it's very clear and your professionalism is, is recognized and honored. And also, if there is one thing you could take away, there is new momentum right now for extended education sites. We have multiple people. There's going to be a physical presence here. Angela was just hired two weeks ago or something like you. So we're adding people on as the day. And we think the future is bright and there's a lot of opportunity for us to partner together. If you ever want us back here, definitely, we will come back and provide what information you need. If there's any community members who want to contact us directly, please extend all our information. We'd be happy to meet with anybody. So thank you again for your time.
Perfect. Thank you all so much. Any other questions? All right.
Thank you.
All right, item 1.4, County Administrative Office, receive a presentation on Trinity Lake Cold Storage Pool Needs and potential alternative recommendations for the ongoing Trinity River Division reconsultation. Tom Stokely, welcome. Thank you for being here.
Thank you very much for having me here today. I'm very excited to be here, actually. I decided I would come and talk to you today after I saw Paul Hoosier's presentation a few months ago. And you've had a lot of good presentations lately from Paul Hoosier, Don Bader, Mike Dixon, and the thing that struck me about Paul's presentation was at the very end, he talked about the need to have some kind of regulatory minimum pool at Trinity Lake that would protect the river, the lake, as well as hydropower. And so I thought that would be a good lead-in for me since I've been working on this for over 30 years. Could we have the PowerPoint, Ashley? So I'm Tom Stokely. I'm with Save California Salmon, the Pacific Coast Federation of Fishermen's Associations, and the Institute for Fisheries Resources. And I was gonna, what I want to do is talk to you today about the law of the river, the law of the Trinity River. This little thing on the right side is the beginning of the law of the river from the 1955 Trinity River Act that said that the secretary is directed to adopt appropriate measures to ensure the preservation of fish and wildlife. This was rather unique for 1955 because basically at that point in time, water was wasting to the ocean and there were always going to be lots of fish and wildlife. Next slide, please. I'm going to have three parts. I'm going to give you some background on the law of the river. Then I'm going to talk to you about carryover storage and then the third part will be moving forward. This is just a diagram of the Trinity River Division from 1952, I believe it was. Next slide, please. Here's a picture of Trinity Dam before it was filled in 1962, I think. You can see the little tower in the center left. That's the intake structure that you saw in Don Bader's slideshow that was exposed at the top. So that gives you an idea of how low Trinity Lake was this last fall and winter. The little round donut in the upper left there, that's the glory hole spillway. You can see it's a very small hole for a very large body of water. At the time it was completed, it was the largest earth-filled dam in the world. And it's the third-largest reservoir in California. Next slide, please. I wasn't around in the 70s, but I moved here in 1981. But what happened is as soon as the dam was completed, we had a big flood in 1964. Immediately, the spawning gravels filled in, the pools filled in. And at one point, I think there were something like seven Coho and maybe 11 Steelhead coming back to the hatchery. The fishery was almost extinct. And so there were a number of students at Trinity High School under the leadership of Roger Hardison, and they held a mock salmon funeral on Highway 299. You can see they had the Trinity High School band there on the right. They put up a placard and they had a little fish coffin that they buried the last fish in the Trinity River. And this got national attention and my understanding is that it started what was called the Trinity River Task Force that Trinity County was part of. And what I want to emphasize to you today is that Trinity County has always been at the forefront of issues to do with the Trinity River and protecting and restoring the the fishery. And you have a lot of power, you have a lot of authority, and I urge you to use it. Next slide, please. So the task force started some flow experiments in the 70s, but then the 76, 77 drought came along. And the Bureau of Reclamation essentially drained Trinity Lake down to about 10%. I think it was about 227,000 acre feet. The county filed a lawsuit against the Interior Secretary Cecil Andrus and saying that they shouldn't stop the high-flow experiments. But unfortunately, the county lost. I might add, the Hoopa Valley Tribe intervened. The county and the tribe have usually worked pretty closely together. Two major findings, that there is not environmental review required for ongoing CVP operations. And the county of origin statutes could be used as a basis to keep water in the basin. But at that time, there was no evidence given that there would be benefits to Trinity County. Next slide, please. As a result of the task force's efforts, there was another piece of legislation passed in 1980. The Stream Rectification Act is kind of a funny name. And it basically authorized sediment control on Grass Valley Creek. Next slide, please. So in 1980, the Bureau of Indian Affairs and the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service completed an environmental impact statement on increased flows. And that resulted in 1981 in what we called the Andrus Decision. And it temporarily increased flows. Original flows were 120,500 acre feet a year. Now the flows, just for comparison, are close to 600,000 acre feet a year on average. He ordered a 12-year flow study to determine the needs of the fishery. And he allowed the flows to increase from 140,000 a year in drier years up to 340,000 acre feet in wetter years. And that was the second to the last thing he did before he left office. They told him to turn in the keys to the Interior Department, but he went ahead and did this anyway. And he also signed the Wild and Scenic Rivers Act. Those were the last two things that he did. In 1983, there was another environmental impact statement completed on a proposed Trinity River Basin Fish and Wildlife Management Program. It had an 11-point action plan. And in 84, the Trinity River Flow Study began. Just a little tip for those of you who are in politics, what Andrus did is he ordered a flow study that would take 12 years to complete, so it would be well beyond his tenure. So if you have a thorny issue, create a commission, give it a long time period and you won't be around to see the end of it if you don't want to deal with it. So we had an act of Congress signed by President Reagan in 1984, the Trinity River Basin Fish and Wildlife Management Act. He had a rather flowing, glowing speech that he gave with it. This was then amended in 1986 with another bill that was signed by Clinton. And I did go back to Washington to lobby for that bill in 19... It was actually 1996, not 86. My mistake. I went back in 95 to lobby for the bill. So it clarified that preserving and propagating fish and wildlife meant restoration to pre-dam levels. There are certain fishery restoration goals that are in place for the Trinity River. They include both hatchery goals to meet the fish that were lost upstream of the dams and then natural fish downstream. And this was an important, the second bullet is an important one that we got in the 1996 amendment, which said that restoration would be measured by the ability of dependent tribal commercial and sport fisheries to fully participate in the benefits of restoration. The point of that was, is that if there are restoration goals and you want to get fish back to spawn, all you have to do is shut off fishing and you'll get those fish to come back. So we wanted to make sure that, in fact, that the goals would be met and people would be allowed to fish tribal, commercial, and sport fisheries. Another important one from the 96 amendment was the role of the hatchery was to mitigate for the lost habitat upstream of Lewiston Dam. The 84 Act also formed the Trinity River Task Force, which was a federal advisory committee that disappeared in 1998. And it also authorized $60 million with the original authorization in 84. And then in 96, another 15 million was added. It actually required Humboldt and Trinity Counties to pay for part of that, which I would liken to the crime victim paying restitution. But fortunately, the state of California paid the county shares for the restoration program. Next slide. So in the late 80s, we had a drought that began and under that Andrus Decision, the flows in the river were cut back. The Hoopa Valley Tribe filed an administrative appeal with the Interior Secretary saying you can't cut the flows below 340,000 acre feet because of tribal trust. And in 1989, the Sacramento winter run Chinook was listed as a threatened species. This resulted in an unfounded excuse to take more Trinity water. You heard Don Bader say that Trinity water is cold and it helps the Sacramento winter run Chinook, when in fact, the water from Trinity, as it goes through Whiskey Town and comes out at the Spring Creek Power Plant on Keswick Reservoir is significantly warmer than the water coming out of Shasta Dam in most years, except when they completely run out of water at Shasta Dam. So actually sending Trinity River water over to the Sacramento River in the summertime harms the winter run Chinook. But apparently, the Bureau continues to claim that it helps them. But I even sent Mr. Bader an email with some data saying, well, this doesn't make sense, what you said. And I never heard back from him. Now Trinity water can help the winter run Chinook if they send it over early before things get hot. But then what that does is it drains Trinity Lake, leaving us with less water. And also because of warming in Lewiston Reservoir, if there's not diversions later in the summer and in the fall, then Lewiston heats up and then the Trinity River gets too warm for fish. Next slide, please. In the early 1990s, we had a number of successes, Water Right Order 90-5. The Bureau of Reclamation has water permits through the State Water Board. And even though they're a federal agency, they are required to comply with state water law. And this was a water right order to require the Bureau to protect winter run Chinook and other salmon in the Sacramento River. The concern by the county at the time was that they would use it as an excuse to take more Trinity water, take it early and harm the Trinity River. So we got a clause in there. I did participate in this hearing back in 1990. Shows how long I've been doing this. I started working on the river at about 1988. They basically said that the Trinity, that you shall not operate the Trinity River Division in a manner that harms Trinity River fish as defined by 56 degrees at Douglas City or the North Fork, depending on the time of year, which I'll show you later. So that was a big victory. Unfortunately, it's a hollow victory. The State Water Board really doesn't pay any attention to temperatures in the Trinity River. The Bureau of Reclamation doesn't put even a report in there about what they expect the temperatures to be at Douglas City or Lewiston. And this water right order is clearly inadequate to protect the Trinity River. In addition to that, the temperature of 56 degrees we know is now inadequate. So in 1991, if you recall, the Hoopa Valley Tribe appealed the drier cutbacks under the Andrus Decision. And in 1991, under President George H.W. Bush, a Republican, Interior Secretary Manuel Lujan increased the flows in the Trinity River to 340,000 acre feet in all water year types. And that was a pretty big deal. It was an administrative decision to increase flows in the Trinity River during a major drought without filing a lawsuit. That's, that's pretty powerful stuff. In 1992, between the Lujan Decision and the North Coast Basin Plan, temperature objectives that were approved by the EPA in 1992, the flows in the river for the summer went from 300 CFS to 450 CFS. And that resulted in an immediate 1,500% increase in whitewater boating in the Trinity River. Because of the 450 CFS in the summer, you have a whitewater boating industry that is, is very profitable and very successful in most years. Next slide, please. These are the basin plan temperature objectives. They were approved by the North Coast Regional Water Quality Control Board in 1990 and the State Water Board in 1991. And the EPA approved them in 1992 as Clean Water Act standards. We've had some discussions before with you about amending these temperature objectives. We believe, excuse me, now that the, it should be 53 and a half degrees to protect spawning fish, not 56 degrees. And that's actually for Chinook. For Coho salmon, it needs to be 50 degrees. So the bottom two, there are the 56 degrees, Lewiston Dam to Douglas City and Lewiston Dam to the North Fork. Those are the requirements in Water Right Order 90-5. 90-5 actually came before the EPA approved this. So they didn't include the 60 degrees Fahrenheit to protect spawning or to protect holding spring Chinook in the river. Next slide, please. Oh, go back one moment. And one of the reasons that these temperature objectives go from Lewiston Dam to the North Fork Trinity River is under Fish and Game Code 1505. That area is designated as an official spawning area in the Trinity River. So it's embodied in the Fish and Game Code. So that's how we came up with that particular compliance point. Next slide, please. In 1992, we had the Central Valley Project Improvement Act. I went back to Washington to lobby for that as well. Essentially, it said, finish the 12-year flow study. And if the Interior Secretary and the Hoopa Valley Tribe agree, it shall be implemented accordingly. So essentially, it gave the Hoopa Valley Tribe veto authority. If they didn't like what the Fish and Wildlife Service and the Secretary of Interior came up with, they could say, no, we don't agree to it. Next slide, please. There was also something in CVPIA B19 that talked about reevaluating essentially minimum carryover storage at Sacramento and Trinity Reservoirs. In the usual manner of the Bureau of Reclamation, there were a couple of studies and reports and this one was basically buried. And we got no benefit from it, but there is a basis in law to look at carryover storage to protect the Trinity River and to meet the fishery restoration goals there. Next slide, please. Then we had a lot going on in the mid 90s. The old restoration program did a number of channel restoration projects, side channels, bank feathers. But they did not take proper care to make sure that the Trinity River didn't get really muddy. I remember, I believe it was 94, in August of 94, the Trinity River ran like chocolate milk most of the month. I know one couple came up to float the river and fish on their anniversary and it was so muddy, they turned around and went home. So there were a lot of complaints. I was receiving constant phone calls about it. I was very concerned. And I finally received a phone call from a guy named Byron Leidecker, who was a fisherman from Marin County. He was a former county supervisor, a bank president, a race car driver. He had a lot of political connections. He called me up and he said, I'm very upset about this. I might add, he actually got stuck in the mud and Herb Burton had to pry him out of the mud with an oar. And so he was mad. So he called me up and yelled at me for about a half an hour. And at the end, he said, well, I got money and I can hire a lawyer. What would you do? And I told him, you should have your lawyer send a letter to the Regional Water Quality Control Board, letting them know that this project is violating the turbidity objectives in the basin plan, which is muddying the river, and they should be shut down. He did so. The lawyer sent the letter. And there was an immediate cease and desist and cleanup and abatement order. And as a result of that, in 1995, the Interior Secretary declared a moratorium on mainstem construction and also directed the Fish and Wildlife Service to complete an environmental impact statement that would meld the flow study and the restoration program together. At that time, we had a Fish and Wildlife Service office here in Weaverville for the restoration program and another one in Lewiston for the flow study. And they basically did their own thing. You know, the guys out there maybe raised chickens in the TP burner and floated the river and it looked like a real fun job. But there was no melding of it. So in, I think it was 95, I might be a little wrong on these dates. Trinity County became the sequel lead agency for this EISEIR that would be the document to develop what ultimately became the Trinity Record of Decision that is now part of the Law of the River. The way that we were able to get the county as the sequel lead agency was because of the floodplain management ordinance that requires a permit from the county for any in-stream construction. In 2000, then the EISEIR was completed, but Trinity County declined to certify the EIR for two reasons. One was that they wrote the document in a way that our sequel lawyer felt was inadequate to comply with the law, so we would lose in court for sure. And secondly, the Bureau of Reclamation would provide no money to certify the EIR. So it was a loser for the county to certify the EIR, go to court, lose, and then pay the Westland Water District's legal fees. So I recommended that the county not certify the EIR. Next slide, please. So we had the Record of Decision in 2000 and it includes increased flows, spawning gravel, channel rehab, watershed component, which I might add, in my opinion, has been grossly underfunded for over 20 years. New bridges. I raised $5 million from the state to pay for the new bridges on the river. Also included adaptive management, which a report shows that the program really isn't implementing, and a 600,000 acre foot minimum pool. Next slide, please. The last biological opinion on the Trinity River was this 2,000 biological opinion by the National Marine Fish Service. That's the one that had the 600,000 acre foot minimum pool, which was not which was not adequate, but they pulled it out of a hat and they don't comply with it and it's inadequate in the first place. Next slide. So the current restoration program, uh, there's an office in Weaverville. So it was supposed to be co-leads with the Bureau of Reclamation and the Fish and Wildlife Service, but I think largely the Bureau of Reclamation runs the program. They provide most of the money. Most of the employees over there at the office next to TOPS are Bureau of Reclamation employees. The Trinity Management Council with agencies, tribes and the county. And then the Federal Advisory Committee was the Trinity Adaptive Management Working Group. And that was disbanded by the Trump Administration in 2017. I was the last chairman of the TAMWAG. We wrote a rather scathing letter in March and by November we were disbanded. And the restoration program with direction from the TMC recommends flow releases, restoration projects and the monitoring program. Next. So bring you up to the current situation and while the, the representatives from Reclamation and the Restoration Program told you that over a year ago, they had decided to do a reconsultation for the Central Valley Project, they had not decided to do a separate one for the Trinity River. In fact, there have been a couple of reconsultations for the larger CVP since the 2000 buy-up on the Trinity, but they did not include the Trinity River. The most recent one was under the Trump Administration, which basically called for greater water deliveries and the low reservoir that you saw most recently is partly a result of that. So uh, PCFFA wrote what's called a 60-day notice of intent to sue letter that basically said, you need to do a new biological opinion reconsultation for Trinity Coho. Because it turns out the 56 degrees, while it's not good for Chinook, it's really not good for Coho Salmon. We found in uh, fall of 2021 that the warm water left in Trinity Lake was warmer than 50 degrees and they killed a substantial number of Coho uh, at the Trinity River Hatchery. That's what's called an unauthorized take of a listed species. So we used that information to develop this letter that basically said, you got 60 days to tell us you're going to prepare uh, a new biological opinion or we're going to sue your ass. And they decided to go ahead and prepare a new biological opinion. Next slide, please. So uh, does anybody have any questions on the history? Okay. Sorry to take so long, but I want, really want you to understand how we got to where we are today. Next slide, please. So what is reservoir minimum carryover storage? Typically it's a uh, established reservoir storage on a particular date, usually September 30th, which is the end of the water year. It could also be May or December. The concept that I have promoted, but I don't believe the Bureau has promoted, is to have enough cold water in Trinity Lake to withstand a multi-year drought. Uh, it may be worse than 2834 most recently, but that's the time period that's was at least until recently considered the worst drought in California history. So to have enough water in the lake and still meet downstream temperature objectives to keep salmon healthy during that seven-year period. And some reservoirs do have a minimum pool requirement, but not Trinity. Ruth Lake has one, I believe. Uh, some reservoirs on the Merced River, Lake Siskiyou and Siskiyou County has a minimum pool, but not Trinity. Next slide, please. So we've had a number of efforts to obtain a minimum pool. Uh, back in 1992, when I worked for Trinity County, the county coughed up a little money for a company named Balance Hydrologics to develop a minimum pool analysis for a drought hearing because the State Water Board was looking at what they could do to uh, alleviate the drought. So we presented that and uh, they did not take it up. Uh, then in 2000, we had the Trinity Rod Buy Up. That 600,000 acre feet uh, was put in there. It was kind of pulled out of the 92 testimony. But obviously they took it well below 600,000 acre feet this last year. And as I will show you later, it's also inadequate to provide cold water for fish downstream. In 2014, Assemblyman Chesbro introduced a bill, AB 1914, that would have required the State Water Board to amend the Trinity permits and include a minimum pool. It failed in the State Assembly. Uh, it was not handled correctly, in my opinion. But anyway, we had a shot and we didn't get it. Uh, then in 2017 and 2018, uh, we had the Delta Tunnels Water Right Hearing. Any the, as you know, the Delta Tunnels, uh, it was known as Delta Conveyance Facility. Uh, there were two tunnels that were proposed that would go underneath the delta to take clean fresh water from the Sacramento River and send it to the pumps that send water to the Southern California uh, through the state aqueduct as well as the Delta Mendota Canal. So whenever there's a change in the point of diversion, it requires a water right hearing. And so there was an extensive hearing and essentially what we tried to show was that by allowing increased exports through the delta through these tunnels, it would draw down Trinity Lake and there would be a negative impact on Trinity Lake. And therefore there needed to be mitigation. So I hired a hydrologist, Greg Cammon, and he gave a testimony as well as I did. And his uh, conclusion was that a minimum pool in Trinity Lake at the beginning of a seven-year drought would need to be between 1.25 and 1.5 million acre feet. Uh, the project was withdrawn, so there was no decision. Now we're up to the reinitiation of consultation. That's an opportunity for a minimum pool. And then also perhaps State Water Board Water Right Order 90 dash five might be amended as well. Next slide. Um, I'm just going to go over a couple of the studies we had. This is the 1992 studied by Balance Hydrologics. An interesting story here is that Tony Finnerty was the hydrologist who developed this report initially. And between the time he developed the report and he gave testimony, he was in a terrible bicycle accident, had a serious brain injury and he was unable to give the testimony. So we had to rely on Barry Hecht, who was the president of Balance Hydrologics. Well, Barry has a terrible stutter. And we were scared to death of having a witness with a terrible stutter. But in fact, it was the most gripping testimony you can imagine. A witness who has a stutter. Everyone was on the edge of their seat anticipating his next word. So it was actually a really an incredibly good testimony, but unfortunately, uh, the State Water Board didn't help us. I might add that the State Water Board, the five members are appointed by the governor and they're uh, ratified by the State Senate. So they're under the control of the governor. So anything the State Water Board doesn't do for the Trinity River goes back to the governor. Next slide, please. Then in 1998, um, I was able as, as Trinity County's lead agency for the mainstem Trinity River Fishery Restoration EISEIR, I was able to tap into quite a bit of uh, Bureau of Reclamation money to hire consultants. So I hired uh, Greg Cammon, the hydrologist, as well as Mike Diaz. And this is a memo that Greg Cammon wrote to us in 1998. And if you look at the highlighted ones there, you can see this is basically simulating the seven-year drought, starting with uh, one and a quarter million acre feet or 1.5 million acre feet. You can see at the end of the drought with one and a quarter, Trinity Lake would be down to 635,000 acre feet. Whereas at 1.5 million, it would be 884,000 acre feet. We used to think 600,000 acre feet would adequately protect fish down river, but it will not. Uh, and so we really need to start at one and a half million acre feet during uh, the good years so that we have enough to last during the drier years. Next slide, please. Um, and this is uh, I think one of the only carryover storage studies not done by Trinity County. This was by the Bureau of Reclamation in 2012. And essentially, if you look at the highlighted part, it says that carryover storage of less than 750,000 acre feet is thermally problematic for cold water fish. This is an admission by the Bureau of Reclamation that the 600,000 acre foot minimum pool in the Record of Decision and the buy-up is inadequate to protect Trinity River fish. Next slide, please. Then this is uh, an excerpt from Greg Cammon's testimony before the State Water Board in 2017 and 2018. And you can see in the highlighted part there, it basically says that uh, we need 1.25 to 1.5 million acre feet at the beginning of a drought to meet downstream temperature objectives. 600,000 acre feet does not fully achieve compliance. So this was an important testimony. Next slide, please. Now there are limitations on carryover storage. At the high end, you've got the safety of dams criteria. Uh, in 1974, the Bureau of Reclamation left Trinity Lake very high at the beginning of winter. We had a very large runoff event and they nearly overtopped Trinity Dam. And as a result of that, the Army Corps of Engineers and the Bureau of Reclamation went back and basically said, you need to leave this much space in the reservoir so that it doesn't overtop. Uh, because if it does overtop, it's a wall of water 250 feet high that will take eight hours to get to the coast. And it'll wipe out all of the communities along the river. From what I've heard, although I don't know for sure, I've heard that the water would even come up to where the uh, the churches there on uh, Highway 299 before you get into town, the water would back up. So it would be very catastrophic. So they can't fill it up more than this. Now, Mike Dixon told me they've changed it. He doesn't know what it is. I don't know what it is. I guess it's a national secret, but they need to leave room in the reservoir because it cannot pass what's called the probable maximum flood, which is about 300 cubic feet per second, which is 600,000 acre feet a day. On the low end, we've got the senior water right contractors. The Sacramento River Water Right Settlement Contractors and the San Joaquin River Exchange Contractors. Those folks had uh, used water from the San Joaquin and Sacramento Rivers prior to Shasta Dam being built on the Sacramento and Fryant Dam on the Sacramento, on the San Joaquin River. So the Bureau of Reclamation had to reach a settlement with them before they could get the water rights to build those dams. And they gave them a really sweetheart deal. They basically gave them more water than they would have gotten without the dams in place. Uh, during 2021, they actually got more water or close to the full amount of water that flowed down the Sacramento and San Joaquin Rivers. Since the Bureau of Reclamation has other commitments, they basically don't have enough water in the Central Valley on the other side of the hill to meet these commitments and their other commitments during drought. So what you'll see historically is that during drought years, the first few drought years, they draw down Trinity very heavily. That's when they took more than 100% of the river's flow. It was to fulfill these contracts. These people get 75% of their contract amount regardless of how much water's in the reservoirs or how much water came into the reservoirs. It's a real problem. I think the Interior Department is now um, negotiating with the San Joaquin River Exchange Contractors. We really need to see those contracts changed. Uh, without it, I don't see much hope for the Trinity River because they'll continue to suck it dry during drought years. Um, next slide, please. Okay. I think we moved through pretty quickly. Um, any questions? Is there another slide or is that it? Okay. How do we get a minimum pool? Reinitiation of consultation. That's probably the most likely one. The State Water Board could also amend Water Right Order 90 dash five. They could also convene a separate Trinity River Water Right Hearing. That was actually promised in 1989 and in 1990. We've yet to see it yet. Um, another thing that I've been doing over the years is whenever there's a change petition such as the Delta Tunnel or new water right applications such as sites reservoir, what I do is I work with the groups that I'm involved with and we protest those water right hearings and we claim that the Trinity River is not adequately protected from diversions. And they need to amend the Trinity's permits to provide a minimum cold water pool as well as assurances that those downstream temperature objectives will be met. Uh, another one is state legislation and that's obviously difficult. Next slide, please. So now we have the uh, red flag alternatives that was delivered on the 5th of this month. And we have a number of alternatives there. Next slide. The problem I see with this entire document is that the Trinity River is being thrown in with the Central Valley Project. And this is the purpose and need that basically is the basis for the alternatives. So we're, as long as we're thrown in with the rest of the CVP, I think the Trinity River is going to get the short end of the stick. So I think there needs to be a separate environmental impact statement for the Trinity River reconsultation. Otherwise it's going to get lost in, in the larger CVP. Next slide, please. Going through the alternatives, uh, alternative one is a very bad alternative and it should not be there. It takes the Trinity River back 30 years to 340,000 acre feet a year. It violates the North Coast Basin Plan Temperature Objectives. It doesn't appear to include Water Right Order 90 dash five requirements, even though for the rest of the CVP it does. There's no minimum pool. It eliminates what we call the lower Klamath Record of Decision, which releases water from Trinity and Lewiston Dams in summer and fall to prevent the repeat of the fish kill, when which 65,000 adult salmon were killed because of poor conditions. The diversion schedule would favor the Sacramento River. That would mean drawing down Trinity early and sending the water over the hill earlier. And it also talks about looking at mechanical restoration that was already looked at in the 2000 EIS. This alternative should be eliminated. Next slide. Uh, alternative two does not allow carryover of rod water. That would currently the Trinity Record of Decision water has to all be used in the year that it's available. You cannot carry it over to another year. Some of my associates don't think we should be able to do that, but I think we should. There may be a year where we might have temperature problems if we don't defer some of the rod flows. Um, it also has a minimum pool of 1.2 million acre feet. Uh, that's probably my fault because I told Mike Dixon that before I looked at the Cammon memo from 1998. It should be, uh, and I came up with these numbers based on the Cammon memo. 1.5 million acre feet the first year, 1.3 the second, 1.1 the third year, 1 million acre feet the fourth year, 900,000 the fifth year, et cetera. It appears to remove Trinity County from decision-making. And it also appears to eliminate Douglas City and North Fork temperature requirements in the basin plan and Water Right Order 90 dash five. So it would likely result in lower summer flows, which would harm spring Chinook salmon, which are a state listed species. And it might very well decimate your whitewater boating industry. Next slide. Red flag alternative three. It allows carryover of rod water to one year, from one year to the next. Carryover storage is no good. It clearly has reduced summer flows in some years. It appears to remove Trinity County from decision-making. It was a little murky on that. And it appears to eliminate Douglas City and North Fork temperature requirements. Next slide. Red flag alternative four is really bad as well. One and four are really terrible alternatives. Uh, it allows cutting the rod flows to rebuild storage, but it does not share the cutbacks with exports to the CVP. So that could be an excuse to never fill Trinity Lake and continue high exports to the CVP and cut flows for the river. This has no place in a biological opinion or any kind of EIS that intends to restore Trinity River fish and protect Coho Salmon. Next slide. So here's um, what I would suggest. Uh, I'm still working on a letter with my associates, but these are the uh, minimum pool numbers that I came up with. I think the really big question here is if you have a minimum pool, how do you meet it? Do you cut, do you carry over rod flows from one year to the next? Do you cut exports? Do you share it equally? Um, obviously the PUD would like to see a reduction in rod flows, but um, I did talk to Paul Hooser and he said that sharing it between the exports and the rod flows might be a reasonable way to go. I'm hesitant to cut rod flows myself after having worked for so long on it. Next slide, please. Uh, the, here's some more of a preferred alternative. Same as no action for trans basin diversion and that would mean that the bulk of the Trinity Water would not be shipped over the hill until late summer and fall in order to keep Lewiston Reservoir cool and flushed out. If you send it over early, it's going to draw down the lake, eliminate your cold water and you're not going to have enough water to keep Lewiston cold for the spawning period. Um, winter flows, that's a really, really hot topic. And you've had a lot of heat about that. Um, my suggestion is that there be a moratorium until there's NEPA. It appears that there needs to be an environmental review of that. Obviously there were very significant economic impacts to Trinity County. Uh, I think there needs to be a moratorium until we have some monitoring results to see if it actually did any good for the fish in the river. Supposedly it's supposed to make fatter, healthier. healthier fish that will have a higher survival, but we don't know if it actually worked. I will add also that, that I'm concerned that county and HOOPA opposition to the winter flow may result in the county getting disenfranchised from decision making. So, uh, I, you know, the restoration program worked very hard to get that approval to get you to override Liam's no vote on the TMC. And I believe that they may try to change the management structure. I don't know this, but it's a concern that I have. It's interesting because the TMC votes on a seven to one rule, a super majority, no more than two votes can vote no. And I have railed against that ever since it was adopted in the early two thousands. And now I support keeping it because I wanna see Trinity County have a say in all this. I don't wanna see you become disenfranchised. But you're gonna need to watch it very closely to make sure that you don't get disenfranchised, that you don't lose your seat on the TMC or that they come up with some new management structure that leaves you out. Um, lower Klamath flows, same as no action. Temperature management, uh, we'd like to see all basin plan temperature objectives revised plus the new temperatures at Lewiston. Next slide, please. Okay, I think I went through most of this already, so I won't belabor it. Next slide, please. That's it. And, and maybe in closing, I will say that I would encourage you, if you have the resources, to hire a good water lawyer to help you with this. This stuff is really complicated. Uh, it even gets my head spinning. I've had a lot of conversations with my associates over the last couple of days. There's a lot to think about, a lot of strategy. And I think if you're gonna spend money on a water lawyer, it would be well spent on a lawyer that would help you with this issue. And I think it would probably be more fruitful than working on Humboldt County's fifty thousand acre feet. Cause this is the future. This is a, a once in a quarter century opportunity to get something changed, but it's also dangerous because the way they've lined up these alternatives, it looks like they're setting it up to take away what you have already. So it's very, very important and obviously a very big resource for the county between recreation at the lake, fishing and recreation and whitewater boating in the river and of course your PUD. And one of the things, uh, Paul and I, Paul Hooser and I have been talking for a long time about these issues. And while we don't always agree on everything, we do agree that a minimum pool is very important for power in particular. Because when the lake gets very low, like it did the last few years, they have to bypass the turbine at Trinity Dam. They have to release water from the lower level outlet, which then foregoes power generation and they lose money. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, questions?
Yes. First of all, thank you, Tom. It's always so informative when I spend time with you. Um, one of the things that seems to be a recurring theme from my perspective at least, is that we seem to be late to the game. And I'm trying to figure out, how do we get into a position where we're not always playing catch up? Are we, are we missing cues? Do we not have people sitting in the right places to be notified? I, I, I'm just, it, it seems like this happens over and over again where we find out that, oh, we missed three different opportunities for public input or these, all these proposals are here on the alternatives and we hate them all, but we're just getting a chance to weigh in on it.
Yeah, well, when I left Trinity County in late oh eight, nobody took my place. And when I left Trinity County, basically these issues pretty much dropped to the back of the line. Now you do have a natural resource specialist, Patrick Flynn. Also, because of the lake getting so low, the interest in this has heightened like it's never been before. I mean, I talked about minimum pool for thirty years and nobody really gave a darn because the lake was full. Everybody was happy. Now we're in an emergency. So I think you need a natural resources division that can really stay on top of these things. Um, I try to keep you informed, but quite honestly, I'm mostly retired. I don't really even wanna work on this stuff. And if they reform a federal advisory committee, I'm not signing up again because that was the biggest waste of my time. And I can guarantee you that the next federal advisory committee for the restoration program will be the same thing. They'll have great meetings, come up with good recommendations, and then they'll get trashed by the TMC. So you need to have a person or persons who are specifically tasked with tracking these things. I think, uh, your new CIO was at the uh, quarterly meeting of the WIN Act uh, this week, and that's the first time I've ever seen a county administrative officer at any of these meetings. So my compliments to you, Mr. Tuthill, for, for getting involved. But I do think you need a good water lawyer. Um, a lot of this stuff is even beyond me, quite honestly. But you're, you're catching up quickly, I'd say.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I, I too was on that meeting and I
That's right, you were.
I appreciate your uh, presentation today from the standpoint that um, from, from my vantage point, it takes an advanced degree to understand what they were talking about in all of those alternatives. And so you kind of laying that out in terms that um, more of the rest of us can understand is very much appreciated. Um, so I, I agree with uh, Sue Reser Lutweller feeling late to the game all the time, but I also appreciate your uh, pointing out that our CIO is very much involved in this and is also seeking ways by which we can not only catch up, but make sure that we do have that seat of the table. He's very much on that. And um, so I want the public to be aware of that, that he, uh, his level of engagement is definitely there and appreciated.
Yeah, actually, I think you had three supervisors on. The two of you and Supervisor Gogan, I believe. That's huge. See, when I left Trinity County in oh eight, it was kinda like, don't slam the door on the way out. You're a nuisance. You're a grant funded department. You affect our cash flow. Why don't you do something for Ruth Lake and Southern Trinity? And it was like, well, I'm fed up with the restoration program. I'm fed up with Trinity County, so I'm gonna leave. Then I got sucked back in again to the TAMWAG and that was really a pretty awful experience. And I quite honestly was happy when they disbanded the TAMWAG because I was wasting my time. Now I'm able to do these things, which I consider much more significant.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
And one other thing, Tom, sorry, is I, uh, actually, Trenton and I will be hosting a town hall meeting in the North Lake area specifically about all of this. And I know a big part of that is wanting to focus on, well, what can be done? And so we're talking about some things that we can do. We could potentially allocate funds to attorneys and to a resource division and so forth. What would you say that the public can do? So, cause they're, they're gonna, we won't, wanna hear that from us. And I'm looking to hear what you would say if you were there and you're welcome to join us.
Sure, I'd be happy to join you. Well, I think the public is very interested in this. There's a couple of Facebook groups and they've been very active. I think the public needs to get informed. I think they need to comment on these things. And I think they need to work with all of you to come up with something that the entire county can agree on. And that's difficult because this county is really schizophrenic when it comes to water policy. You've got the PUD, you've got the river and you've got the lake interests. And they've always been fighting at each other. And the only thing that is the, the thing that keeps them all together is the lake and the need for a higher pool at Trinity Lake. And that benefits all three of the resources in Trinity County or the interest groups.
And Tom, regarding those interest groups, you know, there were folks on that meeting that were expressing um, their views from a standpoint of economic development. And one of the concerns that I have is that we have an accurate perception of the weight that our experience of and um, these subsequently communicated impacts, you know, have had um, their relative position as other factors of consideration of this entire Central Valley project. Um, how do I say this? I don't think the people at the higher levels give one care about what the economic impact is to us. And if that's the case, I want us to understand that and then be able to attack our views from a vantage point that will have weight and impact so that at the end of the day, people don't feel as though, you know, we, we hollered as loud as we could and it didn't make one difference. Um, I want us to holler in a way that does make a difference. Can you speak to that a little bit?
You bet. After working for so many years on these issues, I came to the conclusion, quite honestly, that the only way to get anything done is through litigation. That's why I think you need an attorney. You can scream and shout all you want, claim economic harm. But unless you get into a courtroom and you've got a good case, they're not gonna pay attention to you. And the real issue gets down to the fact that the Trinity River is supposed to be the waters of the Trinity River, the priority for that is supposed to be the Trinity River Basin. Under the area of origin laws, under that language in the nineteen fifty five act, it's very clear that the waters of the Trinity River are meant to be used first in Trinity County. And that's why the county lost in seventy seven is they did not give a showing on what the economic benefit was to the county of leaving the water in the basin. Well, we had a huge EIS with a massive economic analysis in two thousand for the Record of Decision. It showed huge benefits to Trinity County, to the North Coast region from restoring the Trinity River and leaving the water here. Those issues need to be brought up to the forefront. That the waters of the Trinity River are meant to help Trinity County, Humboldt County, as well as the North Coast region. I mean, the, the salmon fishery is closed from almost the Washington border down to Mexico. And a lot of it's because Klamath Trinity Fishers in such poor shape. And so it's not just us, but it's a, a huge region. And there have been a number of studies. There was one economic study that said a restoration of the Trinity River was worth a billion dollars. And so we need to dig that stuff up again, bring it to the forefront. And I think you need an attorney to argue that for you. I can't argue it for you and I'm not sure how much longer I wanna argue it for you.
Yeah, it's interesting. You mentioned that, uh, Dick Morris gave me a document just the other day that's this thick, but it's from the nineteen fifties talking about this whole project and the dam. And it specifically refers to economic impact and res- and recreation. And yet we hear all the time that's not a component. So it's interesting to be able to look back to these historical documents and see some of that information.
Yeah, and I don't know how many of you have read the ebook called How the Trinity Lost Its Water. The North Lake Improvement Association has it on their website. And it basically details in depth with footnotes the deception that was uh, played upon Trinity County and the Board of Supervisors and the people of Trinity County before they passed the Trinity River Act of nineteen fifty five. The argument it'll ruin fishing is absolute nonsense. This will be under Trinity County's control. It wasn't true. And it's good to look at that to realize how deeply the county was deceived. For instance, the low flows they came up with in the fifty five act, they took the average of the lowest summer flows and they gave us that rather than averaging the high and the low flows. They just took the average of the lowest flows. So it's a big fight. It's a, it's a generational fight. And uh, it'll go on forever. But you need to, you need to have the resources to fight it. And up until now, you haven't really had them.
Tom, I just wanted to say thanks, uh, for your, all your support to the county and specifically your recommendations and acknowledgement, you know, of uh, Patrick, uh, and also, you know, the, the potential for some sort of natural resources element uh, of the, on the county staff to work some of these. And then your recommendation for, you know, how we move forward. Uh, I certainly appreciate the, the input and your recommendations.
Sure, I'm happy to help anytime.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Have a good day.
You as well. Um, all right, it is ten forty two. We're gonna take a five minute break and then we'll be back in session. All right, it is ten forty-two. We're going to take a five-minute break, and then we'll be back in session. Oh, yeah. Well, it's presentations. I'm going to move forward. It is just presentations. All right, we are back in session and we are at item one point five. Planning and zoning receive a department overview from interim Deputy Director of Planning, Ed Presley.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Board. I appreciate the opportunity to come here this morning and give a I would say a pretty broad update overview of to the department and where we're at. So Ashley, if you could pull up the slideshow. All right, so here we are. It's been a long time coming. It's been about a year and a month, I think, since I started in this position. And I can honestly say that no two days were ever the same. And it's been a challenge from day one. It's been a great learning process. And it's been awesome just to get to know everybody that's involved. The planning department itself is often referred to as the building and planning department, but it's also, it also is broken down into four divisions. And that is building cannabis, environmental health, and planning. So there are currently twenty-two of thirty personal allocations filled, and that's a seventy-three point three-three percent employment rate. I wanted to highlight that at the beginning. But I also wanted to state that, you know, the planning department is a key enabler and supporter of economic development throughout the county. And so what we're going to do here this morning is just kind of walk through all four divisions so that you can get better an idea of what we do on a day-to-day basis. So we're going to start with the building division. I wanted to go alphabetically just to avoid any kind of craziness. And give some kind of structure from the beginning. Next slide. All right, so let's start off with the building division personnel. There are four allocations and three of them are filled. And we're going to start with our admin coordinator, Zach. And so I just wanted to give you a little bit more of a personal overview of personnel. So it gives you some idea of what these people actually do on a daily basis. And just as a disclaimer upfront, I also wanted to mention that this slideshow is very personalized. So when I send it out to the four divisions, I got input from them. And so we have a bunch of different pictures along the way. So that you can see there is a human side to these folks that are toiling and literally in the middle of arguments, fights, trying to get it right on a daily basis. So Zach ensures applicants are submitting all applicable documents in regards to the permit that the applicant is applying for. He's also there to answer any submittal questions, verify that all the permit fees are received before issuance. Jeff, yeah, that's next. Jeff is our co-compliance lead worker at the building department. He performs code enforcement duties, including building and zoning violations countywide. Kind of the interesting point, the way that it's broken down is Jeff takes care of everything from Hayfork Summit South. And Cody takes care of all building violations, everything from Hayfork Summit North. So it's broken down kind of regionally like that. So everybody is aware of what their priorities are. And Jeff, he assists the public at the front counter with technical building questions, covers building inspections south of Hayfork Mountain, as I said, but he can go anywhere. They're interchangeable, but that's just their basic regional responsibilities. And then he can either can fill in either Jeff or Cody for whatever's needed. So next slide. Yep. So Cody's next. He inspects everything north of Hayfork Summit. He assists with the public answering questions, technical, technical nature questions. He's administer for the, or administrator for the SmartGov permitting system. And he's also the backup for the accounting position. He's been there for a little bit, and he's kind of a jackpot trades over there. So it's very good to have Cody there. Our building inspector three position is currently vacant. We do have a retired and new attendant, Jim Santiago, filling in that role for now. But we do believe we'll have a building inspector three, hopefully by the end of the month, ready to go. Next slide.
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
So the building inspector three position is vacant currently, but we should have an ability to fill it by the end of the month.
Oh, okay. All right, it is already funded or not funded?
It is funded, yes.
Oh, okay. So we just haven't been able to. So I'm just trying to figure out when you say we should have an ability to fill it. Is it, I'm getting into something I shouldn't?
Kinda.
Okay.
That's fine. Somebody going through and getting some certifications. And once those certifications are completed, then they will have the appropriate qualifications for the building inspector three position.
Gotcha.
Yep.
And if that's the four personnel, so there isn't somebody who runs this department on it as its own, you just have these people that report up then to you? Is that correct?
Correct, but since Cody is kind of the lead inspector, he's the one that's filling that role for now. All right, so we're on to the next slide. So the bottom line is the building department's goal is to ensure proper standards are met at the local level to safeguard lives, property, and the general public health, safety, and welfare of the residents. It ensures this through building, through the building permit process by performing inspections and meeting and discussions with the public in regards to the specific building projects. Building department staff ensure the applicant documentation is complete and correct and loaded in a smart gun for tracking, which is very important if we ever need to go back and find out where something is in the process. Next slide. So we'll talk a little bit about the process here. The building department applications are reviewed by the building division and then are sent to environmental health cannabis or planning divisions if applicable. And then brought back to the plan or to the building department. Staff review building plans and other required documents to ensure they comply with Trinity County ordinances and California state building code requirements. Building department staff regularly rely on each other to help out with other duties as needed. And that's kind of the standard across the board, I think, with Trinity County. You usually have people that wear different hats because the manning is just what it is. And it reinforces the main goal is to always help the public move forward with their project in an efficient manner. And that's most important. Next slide. The building department is a general fund slash cost recovery department. A fee study has been completed and approved by the Board of Supervisors. So there has been a little bit of an increase in some of the permits. And construction permits are the bulk of the revenue source. And just to, just to kind of give you an idea, they processed to date, so this was a couple of weeks ago when all this was written, five hundred and fifty-seven building permits over the last year. So it's quite significant amount of work just for four people over the course of a year.
And that was the last year?
Yes. To date, well, a couple of weeks ago. So now we move into the cannabis division. Next slide. So here's the cannabis division personnel, and there's a little photo of them and are some of them in the break room. There's fourteen positions allocated and ten positions filled. And the ones that are filled are the ones that are currently funded. So we have as admin coordinators, we have Baron Videt, we have Tracy as the accountant, associate planner is Bella. Code compliance is Chad, code compliance lead is Daniel, environmental compliance with Stephen Colton and Ida. And the division director is Drew. We also have consultants, Laco and Helix available. Next slide.
And I'm sorry, Ed, did you say there's fourteen allocated, but four of those aren't funded?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, so we get to next slide. Basically, it's the goals and rules of operation here. Where we, where are we trying to go? So we want to successfully regulate the cannabis industry in Trinity County. I think that's first and foremost. And that we do that by getting licensing applications, licensing applications through the process, and those are SEQA compliant application. And then we're in the course of updating the cannabis ordinance and streamlining policy initiatives. You know, every day is always evolving of things that we could have done better. And so the team is consistently looking at things like that so that we can get to a better place tomorrow. Simplify a complex, that's a little bit of a typo there, ever-evolving process, comply with SEQA like I said, and mitigate environmental issues. So we like to think of the SEQA process and everything as stagnant, but if we look at where the division has come from just a couple of years ago. You can see that there is a whole lot of changes that's taken place in the county, and we just continue to learn. And part of that learning process is the ability to communicate effectively with the public. That's a huge part of the entire process. So also along the way, they want to, or they need to standardize operating procedures, effectively utilize the consultant resources. Just kind of dovetails into what I was saying about the building division is utilization of SmartGov permit tracking and interdepartmental cross-talk, which is huge. Interact effectively with state agencies and local stakeholders. And then restore and maintain public faith in the program. Part of that is being transparent. So on to budget, the cannabis division is a grant-funded slash cost recovery department with hopes that it will be viable and only cost recovery at some point because the grant will run out. A fee study is currently being completed. They're utilizing the local jurisdiction assistance grant. And of course, that can fund the program initially, but eventually it needs to be able to stand on its own two feet. Cannabis permits constitute the bulk of of possible revenue and are a mandatory part of the calculus to have a physically solvent department. And so to give a little bit of an update on the numbers to date, and I got these numbers from Drew this morning. There have been four hundred and twenty-two applications submitted. Two hundred and thirty-nine have been noticed. And one hundred and seventy-seven licenses are actually active on the street. Just for the, for the near future, we need to rework the equity program and procure funds from the equity grant. Also seek out other grant opportunities. And as always, limit or eliminate any possibility of litigation.
And Ed, just a point to make on that equity funding. If I'm remembering correctly or understanding correctly, up to including last year, the equity funds were provided, just here's the money if you qualify. But that going forward, they will do that up to a cap of five hundred thousand. And any funds beyond that would have to be matched by the county. Does that sound right?
Yes, and the problem is, well, I'm not going to say the problem, but what happened when that manual was presented to the state. Essentially, the wording that was used in it kind of disqualified the equity applicants that could be receiving that money now. So reworking that equity manual and being able to present that again for adoption by the board. And then submitting another application to the state would actually enable us to get those grant funds. So, but then going forward, it would be a match type situation above five hundred thousand, as you stated.
Okay. I just, since we're talking about budget things later, I think it's just sometimes we're looking at how, how can this money have impact? And there are things like these, other grants and other departments too, where if you don't have the matching funds, you're just not going to get it. At least this goes up to five hundred thousand without matching funds, but then beyond that, where we could have potentially gotten two or three million in the past, it's a whole different story. So thanks. I just want to make sure I had that right.
So anything above five hundred thousand dollars requires matching funds, but up to five hundred thousand, we can continue to get year after year?
As it stands now, that's my understanding.
Yes, but we actually have to rework that equity manual and have it submitted and approved before we can be eligible for those. So we're eligible for them, but we have to have that, that manual meet state requirements before we can actually get the money.
And that's being worked on?
Yes.
And what's the match? Do you know? Is it a percent? If you go above the five hundred thousand?
It'll be a percentage, but I'm not clear on what the actual percentage is. Sorry.
I thought it was a dollar for dollar. But if you wanted to get up to a million, then five hundred was quote free. The other five hundred, you have to put in five hundred. That's what I thought, but I could be wrong.
Well, that's typically the, the way that the grants work, and that's what makes it so problematic. So if you want X, you have to be able to submit X. So basically, it's a match from the, from the state of basically whatever the county can provide.
Okay, thank you.
All right, now we go to Environmental Health Division. Next slide. So here's environmental health personnel. So the administrative coordinator is Kelly, community health worker currently is Cassie. Environmental health specialists are Russell and Ricky, and the environmental health director is Christie. So they have five positions and five are filled right now. But they're unfortunately, the community health worker Cassie did submit her two-week notice, so we'll be reflying that position here in a couple of weeks. And as you can see, environmental health is very, very broad. When you look at how many people are actually working for that division. And I just want you to just please take note of the breadth of what these next few slides are going to entail because they're, they're left, right, up and down. Everything that happens in this county, pretty much, they have a finger to touch at some point. But food facilities and inspections, approximately two hundred per year, and it says two random inspections. So I'm not going to read every, every word on all these. You can view those at your pleasure, but it's a lot of information. On-site wastewater treatment systems. Basically, septic system laws are mandated by the State Water Resources Control Board with the purpose of protecting water quality and public health. Next slide. The water wells, the Department of Water Resources mandates regulations for water wells. About forty percent of the water used in California comes from underground. Groundwater supplies have been responsible for a sizable portion of the waterborne disease outbreaks reported in the U.S. And that's important to keep in mind. So when they go out and they do inspection on a water well, they're literally looking at health and safety of the well owner. State small water systems, their community water system derived from a water well are untreated surface water for five and up to fourteen connections and provide drinking water to fewer than twenty-five people on a regular basis. If the operator doesn't treat the water, a boil water notice must be served to each water connection. And we do have those from time to time. Regulation of septic pumpers and emergency water haulers. Basically, the environmental health has to conduct annual inspections of the vehicle. There's quarterly reporting and monitoring involved. And validation of correct licensing and disposal. Next slide. Publics, public pools and spas, public pools must be deemed sanitary for users. And, you know, I just wanted to touch on this, that if somebody has an Airbnb in the county and they have a swimming pool, it also means that they need to have environmental health come out and check that pool to make sure that it's good to go. Next slide. Body art facility. Trinity County currently has two. Trinity County currently has two. So if you look at, at what's needed here, inspections ensure proper, properly procedure or proper procedures for mitigating bloodborne pathogens. Proper sanitation, documentation and facility requirements required by California Conference of Directors of Environmental Health. Next slide, emergency response. I think we've all seen Christie and the team going out during the numerous disasters we've had over the recent years. She's, she's in there, the team's in there, um, assessing damage. Emergency hazmat response. So some of these will come up in the middle of the night. Um, we may not even hear about them. A lot of times we don't even know they even happen unless you're in the chain to receive the information like uh, from CHP or the sheriff's office. Um, but there's been uh, spills on highway thirty-six, highway two ninety-nine. You know, just things that they get called to in the middle of the night. So while the rest of us are sleeping or not in a response type situation. Environmental health will get called out and they will have to go and respond and determine what's the best measures to go forward to prevent further damage in the community. Or in our rivers. So they work with code enforcement as well, responding to citizen and allied agency complaints. Regarding air, water, sewage, housing, solid waste, food hazardous waste and other nuisance complaints. Next slide. Um, from a criminal enforcement standpoint, they work with local, state and federal agencies to criminally enforce environmental crimes in Trinity County. Next slide. Uh, coordination with cannabis planning and building. They plan review various elements of land use with health and safety in mind. And they conduct inspections to verify setbacks and compliance with various health and safety and water codes. Next slide. Um, solid waste reg- regulations. They inspect all solid waste sites monthly, quarterly and annually as needed. There are thirty-two active sites in Trinity County. They ensure all health and safety codes are met for water quality, hazardous waste, universal waste and green waste. And they also participate in load checking and separation assurance for waste stream. So other public health topics, top toxic fish advisory posting and monitoring. Harmful algal bloom, monitoring and posting, swimmer's itch monitor and posting. Wildlife rabies complaints and incidents, vector nuisance monitoring and testing for West Nile virus. Foodborne and waterborne illness complaints and investigations, tick advisories. And finally, bird flu advisories. And as, as you can see, the, the exhaustive list there, and it's not even exhaustive because if something does come up and there's a gray area. They may respond just to render their, their assistance. Um, from budgetary standpoint, they're a general fund slash cost recovery department. The fee study has been completed and approved by the board. They receive monies from uh, permits for food facilities, wells, sewage disposal, small water system, swimming pool. And it's supplemented also by emergency services fees. State and federal aid for disasters, interfund revenues and health realignment funds. So it's quite broad. I, I could probably spend four hours just on this, but just paring it down to give you a fifteen to twenty minute overview. So we're moving forward to planning division. Next slide. So here's the current personnel. Admin coordinator is Debbie, assistant planner is Mitchell. The associate planner, um, we can kind of put an asterisk there. Uh, we do have someone that we flagged the position and the position was accepted. And they are due to begin on July seventh, so we're very pleased about that. Um, environmental compliance, as Tom and the C A O mentioned earlier, it's Patrick. And I'm the department interim deputy director. Uh, all for consultants, we have S H N and Mentor Harness. S H N just does regular planning work and Mentor Harness is doing the general plan update. So for total positions allocated are seven and total positions are filled are five.
And what about funded, Ed?
Five.
Five funded, okay.
And so when you think about the planning division area of responsibility, this is kind of where it's at. It's all over the place as well. So it's kind of anything that has to do with, with reviewing any kind of project in the county. Um, I did put an asterisk there for the general plan update because that's a high uh, high visibility item. It's going to be taking place here over the next couple of years. But pretty much everything across the board as well. Next slide. For environmental compliance, um, hopefully will be a natural resources kind of uh, a division at some point. But for now, um, Patrick oversees the Trinity River Restoration Program as a technical res- representative for Trinity County. He works on floodplain management, um, community rating system administration. Uh, Surface Mining and Reclamation Act compliance, less than three acre conversion permit review and coordination with CAL FIRE for compliance inspection. And then pure review of planning use permit applications. So planning well is a general plan slash cost recovery department. Uh, currently, the fee study has been finalized and it should be brought together um, with the rest of the, the updates for the board to consider. Um, Craig's supposed to be bringing those forward for review and hopefully we'll get those in place. And then, like I said, uh, July seventh will be a good day because our new associate planner starts that day. Um, there's a whole bunch of revenue sources that are potential on there. And next slide, I did want to speak just, just very shortly about um, economic development. Um, it is supported by all four divisions, obviously. Um, and I wanted to put up some examples. So the digital two ninety-nine broadband project, um, in the inline amplifier building has been approved. Um, in Junction City, there's probably going to be one more out toward the county line over um, right at the Humboldt County line. But that's, that's pretty big for our county because we want to continue uh, expanding on the broadband. And then we did receive the local a- agency technical assistance grant, the Lotta Grant, and that's nearly five hundred thousand dollars for pre-construction technical support. And that entails a siting, study, environmental review and permitting. And that's to connect specifically with middle and last mile providers. Those are underserved or unserved, um, people in the county. So that's pretty good. Um, business growth, you know, we need more. Uh, we got two on the books right now, grocery outlet we're working through right now. Um, they're trying to work through the environmental environmental compliance aspect of their project. And then we have round table pizza. That's going to be rebuilt into the same footprint that it was before. And that one's been looked at right now. Actually, it's been referenced out to environmental health, so they're reviewing it now. But we always need more. Um, as far as ordinances, this is just some of the other stuff. We don't want to limit anything. We want to get everything out there that we can. The limited density or rural housing was recently approved. And so we were very glad on that. And then the electric vehicle charging station permit streamlining ordinance has been reviewed. I just want to caveat that, um, just as an example. Uh, we're probably going to be bringing that back on July eighteenth just to be reviewed because we still technically are out of state compliance. But I'm not bringing that back on July eighteenth for everyone to consider, pardon, for the board to consider. Uh, but you know, we, we shouldn't think of economic development as change in Trinity County, but as a way to increase our standard of living. Next slide. So just to summarize what we went over, um, there's a lot of strengths in the department. Um, just to name a couple is coordination communications between divisions. So when we get a project, uh, it gets bounced around. It gets bounced all around the department. Everybody gets their say so. Um, if there's problems, then it gets uh, referred. And uh, then there has to be a discussion about it and we need to get it resolved and we get it resolved by open communication with the public, transparent. Um, there's a lot of overlap and there's, it's complimentary. So when you're, you're looking into a room with, you know, with um, we'll say building, planning, environmental health sitting there, cannabis sitting there. There is kind of overlap of understanding because the people that are in the seats are not just subject matter experts, but they have the experience to be able to say, hey, what about this? What about that? As far as making um, you know, improvements in the process. It's, it's always an evolving process. Uh, limitations, I think I said at the very beginning, um, you know, we're like seventy-three percent staffed across the board. Um, if we could get more staffing, that would be great, more staffing. Um, and that comes with more funding, that would be great too. The more people we can put in the seat, the better, the better uh, setup we are to procure more economic development for the county. And then as we move into um, you know, uh, furthering economic development, it's just going to provide a better avenue for growth for the county. Increased quality of life for all residents and then opportunities for the next generation to stay local. This is just some of the stuff that I think about. That was a picture of a deer that was on my road here last year that I got excited about, so I thought I would share that as kind of a, a questions slide for the board. If there are any questions.
Um, Ed, uh, thank you. First of all, uh, there's so much going on there. One of the questions I have is, uh, I've seen some counties that have posted sort of like pre-approved A D U plans so that if someone said, oh, I'll build that, then it was just boom, you're done. You know, not completely done, but you know, very streamlined. Uh, is that the kind of stuff that if we have the staffing, all that stuff we'd be doing? Is that where you guys are trying to move things?
One hundred percent. That exact conversation has already happened. And when I look over at our only planner that we have in the office now to kind of research and make this happen from a Trinity County point of view, because there are variations. You know, I mean, there could be slide, but there are some variations between county to county on that stuff. And uh, you know, sometimes you just kind of get the deer in the headlights and okay, well, I'll ask the question a little bit later, but that is the kind of thing because we want it to be as easy for the, for any resident in this county. And one of the most troubling things about it, I don't want to go off too all, too long on this, but um, our residents, and you would understand this immediately by spending time in any of the four divisions. Our residents. They don't know everything about everything. And so a lot of times when they come in, the first thing it is, is that our people have to explain to them what the, what the requirements are. So there's a lot of, I wouldn't say training, but there's a lot of help that's given at the front desk when, when people come in and they have questions. You know, these questions can be answered. And I think that's a good way to do it because it puts a, a template on a website, so it just helps answer that question. So we're not taking up people's time from having to come in and ask those questions. But that's very well noted point.
Okay. And the other thing I was just going to say, you mentioned economic development and I was glad to see that highlighted. And you know, as you covered, the cannabis division is one of the larger staffs. Um, and I'm, you know, I'm sure there's some people go, why so many people for this versus, you know, the other things? Um, but in working with Drew and some of the other people on staff. Uh, when I was collecting information recently and it was based on slightly different numbers, a hundred and sixty-nine approved. Or active applications instead of a hundred and seventy some that you have today. Uh, based on the math that was provided for average size of uh, operation, average production pounds, average price. Average tax rate, all those sorts of things. Compared to last year when we had seven approve, active at this point versus the hundred and sixty-nine. We could expect the cultivators who are residents of our county to generate thirty-two million dollars more in income than they did last year. Which is money flowing into our stores and our restaurants and our gas stations and um, paying people to the extent that they hire people to help them with their operations. And then it takes time for that product to be raised, harvested, sold. But that same amount of product would then generate over five hundred thousand dollars in cannabis tax revenues. So it, there's a, there's a lot of money behind that division that is, um, I know playing catch up with a lot of stuff that they were kind of handed. Uh, as where the program was, but I, you know, they're, they're doing a great job and, and I think we're really about to see some benefit from it.
I think so too, and I appreciate your comments on that. Um. One of the ways that I look at it is just go back a couple of years and walk through Hayfork, for instance, go to Northern Delights or, you know, it's you walk in Wiley supermarket, you know, you see how many people are sitting outside in their cars, you know, coming in and out, that kind of thing. And then you listen to people talk about, uh, when you go down Main Street, Hayfork, there's nobody there. And that's, that's people that could be spending their money on those businesses. And it's the same thing here in Weaverville. These people come through and they spend, you know, money in all the, the businesses. It's not I would, I would say a lot of, a large degree of it is they're not earning the money and then, then, you know, taking off somewhere else because this is where they live. So, you know, and there are a large amount of those and I don't know the exact percentages. But a large amount of the people that are in the cannabis industry live here. This is their home. This is, you know, so that all they do is pump that money right back into the system, you know, for everyone else. So it's kind of a trickle down, even though I don't want to use that, that terminology, but definitely agree with you.
And it'll take a while too, because like all farming, you know, you put all the money in upfront to get going. Um, which some of these have been having to do for years and then, you know, finally you get to harvest and sell and, and so on. But anyway, I'm done.
All right. Thank you. Uh, appreciate your slide deck, your efforts. Enjoy the pictures. Appreciate applying the names to the positions. Helps all of us kind of put people at the right place and, and really be certain as to who's doing what. Um, also appreciate that it was, um, we were systematically moving through each of the departments of the county. This was something that was set up by our interim C A O Garza. And um, so we're still in that process and so focusing on holding planning, environmental health and cannabis today. Appreciate that. All right, moving on to our item one point six, transportation. Receive a presentation from Caltrans District Two System Planning regarding the state Route Three Corridor Plan with us today. We have Natalie Kenny. She's the Associate Transportation Planner. And Erin Kakis, Cassus, thank you, apologize, Senior Transportation Planner. So welcome to both of you. Appreciate you being here.
Hello. Uh, thank you for having us here today. When you're ready for the PowerPoint. So I'm going to be talking about the quarter plan for state Route Three. And a quarter plan is a twenty-year analysis of the route. It contains various information such as environmental, traffic volumes, economic conditions, land use, et cetera. It is intended to help identify potential future issues. Um, before they occur and present possible improvement options to address the identified issues. However, this does not commit any funding or extra resources for those um, potential projects or issues. Uh, next slide. So it, a quarter plan is developed to analyze traffic conditions, demographic, economics, environmental concerns. Um, we look at all modes of transportation, transit, bike impaired, non-motorized vehicles, vehicles, um, freight, you know, all modes. And then we also do put some um, future projects in the plan, but once again, there is uh, no funding sources attached. This is a twenty-year long-range plan. And so it is necessary for a consensus-based vision of the route. It identifies social, environmental, economic and quality of life goals and it just provides Caltrans and like the regional transportation planning agencies, local agencies with more of a coordinated approach for managing state Route Three. So um, state Route Three in Trinity County, it starts at the junction of state Route Thirty-Six and continues north. It passes through Hayfork and then it goes up till the junction of state Route Two Ninety-Nine near Douglas City. For approximately seven miles, there is a break in the route until it um, reconnects in downtown Weaverville where it heads. Or it continues north and it passes near or through Trinity Center, Coffee Creek. Um, obviously Weaverville. And then it continues up through Scott Mountain where it crosses through the Siskiyou County line. And it continues through Callahan, Etne, Fort Jones, Wyrica, until it goes through the city of Montague. View and it turns into County Road A Thirteen. So uh, state Route Three is used and it's a very popular road for summer traffic because there are so many campgrounds along the route. Um, Trinity Lake is Trinity Lake is up there, as everyone knows. And yeah, so the traffic data that we used in State Route Three Plan is from two thousand nineteen. And this is due to the last couple of years of COVID and how our traffic volumes have been, they've been more outliers just due to the pandemic. So a timeline of this plan is on June sixth, the draft plan was sent to the Transportation Commission. And then they're going to have a thirty-day period, so until July seventh for comments. And then July twenty-first, we're going to go through those comments for the next two weeks after that. And then July twenty-first, we're going to send it out for public comments and review, and that's also going to be a thirty-day. And that will end, oh, that's supposed to say August twenty, or sorry, the comment period will end, and then August eighteenth, we're planning on coming back and asking for the letter of concurrence for the plan, and then hopefully we'll have it adopted by the end of August, early September. Next slide. And that's my presentation, so thank you very much, I have my contact email and number up on there, I also have some business cards with me if any of you would like them.
Where would people look for information?
So right now it's just for the agencies and like Transportation Commission, and then when it goes to public comment, we will be posting information on where to get that on our website. Thank you.
Thank you both for being here, appreciate your patience this morning.
Yeah, thank you.
Good to hear from you, yes, thank you. All right, moving on to public comment. These, this time is for information from the public on matters not appearing on this agenda or within the consent calendar. All comments are limited to three minutes and must pertain to matters within the jurisdiction of this board. When addressing the board, please state your name for the record and address the board as a whole through the chair. No action or discussion will be conducted on matters not listed on the agenda. However, the chair may refer the subject matter to the appropriate department for follow-up or schedule the matter on a subsequent board agenda. Good morning.
Morning, Madam Chair, Board. My name's Diane Dara. Did you know that I'm the last Trinity County employee at the Child Support Office? That there is a Trinity County budget being handled solely by Humboldt County employees effective July first, two thousand and twenty-three? That the M O U has written between Trinity and Humboldt County states that each county is legally responsible for mistakes found in their respective counties? That as long as there is a Superior Court in Trinity County, law requires that a child support office must also be in the county? That as, as now Trinity County has no access to the Trinity County records as they are on the Trinity County or Humboldt County servers and must be requested through Humboldt County? That any financial audits findings must be paid back with County General Fund dollars and not the child support allocation? That the I T contract between Trinity and Humboldt Counties for the current fiscal year, which ends June thirtieth, has not been finalized and is still waiting for Humboldt County staff to move it forward? That I have been responsible for reporting both Trinity and Humboldt County expenses to the state since July first, two thousand and nineteen, when the state switched to a new reporting system and method of reporting? That I've not received an evaluation in over two years? That line staff in many county agencies here in Trinity County come in on their own time to cover duties that no one else knows how to do or thinks of in order to keep the work flowing timely? That in less than a year, my grandson was earning half as much as me per hour at a fast food establishment? Did you know that I'm walking away from a six and a half percent increase this close to retirement due to lack of leadership at all levels? That the newest employee has been hired in the Weaville office was the straw that broke this camel's back? As I cannot hear another slanderous remark made about people and places in Trinity County without losing my cool? Did you know that my thirty-two years working for Trinity County, I only had one department head or supervisor ask about the regionalization with Humboldt County? And that was our former Personnel Director Shelley Nelson. The only supervisor that ever asked me questions about something from our department was Jill Cox? That I had an administrator tell me to do something that would have been an audit finding, but instead I contacted the state to confirm my understanding and was able to do my job correctly? That when there is constant turnover at line staff level in any department, maybe you should start looking at the managerial and department head level for reasons as to why. You can't always blame the job or the people taking the positions? That all staff meetings have been held in church sanctuaries during the last year, which make some staff feel so uncomfortable that they do not attend? Did you know that the union has been made aware of these contracts and the departments they affect? And in the event that the staff are penalized for not attending all staff meetings? Did you know that upper management has connections to these sanctuaries? So contracts could be perceived as having a conflict of interest to be entered into, to begin with, besides the possible liabilities of religious conflict at a government agency? Did you know? Do you care?
Thank you. I see no other public comment in the room, do you have any on Zoom?
Or raised hand, the last three digits of the phone number, nine, eight, three.
This is Jeff England. I wanted to get our good morning board. I'd like to bring up the conditions of the roads throughout the county. It seems like the further you get away from Weaverville, the worse the roads get. My main concern right now is Post Mountain. The roads are horrible. I go there once a month with my food bank trucks. Tearing my trucks up, it's tearing up people's cars, there's two-foot deep potholes. These people are taxed just like everyone else. And it seems like to me it's taxation without representation. There's another instant of, I think it's the Mad River Road that goes from through Hetten Shaw, the back way to Ruth Lake. It's been slumped off and the road's been closed, that means there's only one way out of Ruth Lake. And nothing seems to be done unless they've done it in the last month or so. But I just think the, the road conditions in Post Mountain need to be addressed soon. It's horrible if there's a fire, it took me twenty minutes to go three miles to go into my distribution at Four Corners, which is Post Mountain and Rattlesnake Road. But I'd like the board to look at that and see if something can be done, the people have had to try to fix the roads themselves. And doesn't seem right to me that they're paying taxes and they have to fix the county road. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. I have no other raised hands. All right, thank you. All right, let's move into reports and announcements, item two point one, report from department heads, any department heads in the room?
Good morning, Chair, members of the board and staff, Liz Hamilton, Director of Health and Human Services and Director of Office of Emergency Services. I would like to yield my time to Skylar Fisher, Fire Safe Council Coordinator, to discuss our partnership and some of these community meetings that are coming up. And so with the board's, or with the chair's permission, if that would be okay?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Board Chair and Supervisors, my name is Skylar Fisher with the Trinity County Resource Conservation District as the Trinity County Fire Safe Council Coordinator. I'd like to discuss the ongoing project that Trinity County Office of Emergency Services and the Trinity County R C D are working on, which is the ongoing Hazard Mitigation Plan update affecting the entire county. So the first question I usually get when discussing this update is what and why, so what is a hazard mitigation plan, why are we updating it? So Hazard Mitigation Plan is supposed to evaluate existing hazard risks across the entire county, so that is both natural hazards and man-made hazards. Examples include earthquakes, possible dam failures, things within that realm. So we're identifying what areas of the county are most at risk from these hazards? How to mitigate the impacts of these hazards, which communities are most vulnerable? And finding out solutions to sudden hazard events and the long impacts of certain hazards such as drought. In addition, we would like to develop a long-term strategy for maintaining the Hazard Mitigation Plan. So we don't want this to be, you know, we have this huge burst of time where we're doing community meetings and we're developing these very lofty mitigation goals. And then we drop it until five years and we have to develop another plan again. Part of this plan update process is we want to build more partnerships and identify who can actually implement these mitigation strategies, who is responsible? And have regular meetings, so we're on top of public perception of risk. You know, keeping up on the technical information and studies for what risk is in reality in the county and combining that information and outreach as necessary. And so even though FEMA requires that jurisdictions develop and maintain a Hazard Mitigation Plan update every five years due to the Stafford Act, which outlines all that criteria. It's almost like this is a constant. It's a, it's a living plan in a lot of respects, we're going to constantly be updating it and have that update posted every five years for hopeful adoption by the Trinity County Board of Supervisors. So all of that being considered, that kind of goes into the why are we updating it? So we want to be in compliance with the Stafford Disaster Relief and Emergency Assistance Act. Right now, we have, we are outside of the five-year adoption update window, our last plan was adopted in two thousand and sixteen. And the reason, I mean, we like to be compliant, right, but one of the reasons why we like to be compliant is we are not eligible for certain FEMA funding sources if we do not have a current disaster, a hazard mitigation plan. So we would like to bring the county into compliance, so we can be eligible for those funding sources. So part of our outreach efforts is we are holding a series of community meetings, one in each district, starting next week, so we're going to do, we're going to be at the Hayfork Fairgrounds on June twenty-sixth, the I O O F Hall on June twenty-seventh, and the Ruth Lake Community Service District Community Hall on June twenty-ninth, all meetings are at six P M. And then we're going to take a little pause for the Fourth of July holiday and the fair. And then we're going to have meetings again July seventeenth at the Weaville B F D and on July eighteenth at the Burnt Ranch Elementary School, again, both meetings at six P M. All meetings will be available also on Zoom, trying to make things very accessible. And the purpose of those meetings is very similar to why I'm here today, is to describe what the Hazard Mitigation Plan is, why we're updating it with a little bit more detail, but also to provide a place where members of our community can fill out a survey for public perception of hazard. That's very important to our plan, we want to make sure that we are serving all members of our community, even those who may be more, more vulnerable, who may not have been reached in the past, so that's why we're trying to go to, that's why we are going to go to each district. And this public survey is also available online. I passed around flyers at the beginning that detail the information that I'd like to recount, so we have a Google form that has access to the survey. The form is available on the Trinity County Resource Conservation District Facebook and the Trinity County Fire Safe Council Facebook. It's been added to the Trinity County Alerts Community Page. And it is available at the Trinity County Resource Conservation District Admin Office, so if anybody doesn't really use Facebook or doesn't like the Google forms, they can come in person. Or if they don't want to come in person, but they don't want to do the internet aspect, if they want to call me, I can, we can verbally do it over the phone, I'm more than happy to do that, and then I can input their answers into the form. Or they, if they don't want to do the form, but they don't want to call me, they can email me too, and we can work through it that way, too. My number can be found on the Trinity County R C D website and on the, the Facebook postings and on the flyer. So I want to be as accessible as possible so that people can fill out this form, because it really is important, every little bit of input that we get really helps us better understand what areas of the county are most impacted by what hazards and generally what type of situation people are in because of the hazard threats in the county. So that is my spiel about the Hazard Mitigation Plan Update. I encourage everyone to either attend meetings or to fill out the survey online, because that would be super. We're really hoping to get this plan updated by the end of the year, that is our goal. So I'm cheering us on to meet that deadline, and I can answer any questions if there are any questions, thank you.
Thank you, Skylar.
Questions? Skylar, morning, how long would you estimate it'll take to complete the survey?
Oh, five minutes at most, I would, I would say.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other department heads in the room, any on Zoom?
I have no raised hands.
All right. Report from our County Administrative Officer.
Thank you, Chair, I got a couple items, so the abandoned vehicle abatement program, there was a grand jury report issued in December of twenty-two, and in a previous board meeting, it was stated the response would be work with the new C A O, which is me and Ready for Sixth June. That date is obviously coming past, but we are working the, a couple of program adjustments. And we'll continue to work with Chair Cox on the report and plan to have that item on the eighteenth July agenda. Been able to establish some direct in what I consider pretty good contacts with Frontier Communication Management Level. And some of this information has been sent out to some of the supervisors, but I just wanted to make sure it was heard in a public forum. The Burnt Ranch and Big Bar outage was restored last week. The larger permanent restoration project for Big Bar is currently underway. And they're replacing seventy poles via helicopter with an estimated completion date of end of July. And from a county-wide perspective, we are down to thirty-six open customer trouble reports, and that is down from sixty-eight the previous week. And each Thursday I'll get a update from Frontier on that, and we'll keep tracking that down to where it's in a manageable level. We're still about double our open tickets from the, just from an average perspective this time of year, but we're doing much better than a couple of weeks ago. And then I'd just like to thank everybody for pushing out on various channels, through board members, through county employees, through the Trinity County Office of Education. It's all been put out in different forms, the broadband digital equity survey. That was mentioned a little bit earlier, we'll have another agenda item on it a little bit later today, but our survey results went up from three to one hundred and seventy. So we're making some good progress. And I just encourage folks to continue to take the opportunity to take that survey, and we have until the end of June to submit our results. That's all I've got for today, thank you.
Thank you. Reports from members of the board supervisors, start with Supervisor Fraser.
I have nothing to report.
Okay, Supervisor Luke Waller?
Okay, let's see, no out-of-county travel. I'm working with Director Kokas on the Airport Advisory Committee meeting, we're, we're just looking for a date that we can make sure everybody's available, and he is working to make sure that our committee list is up to date, so we're, know who we should be inviting. We had a meeting yesterday on the area, area agency on aging, and I'll let you provide any updates, since I know you were taking good notes. The Trinity County Fire Chiefs Association met last week. Susie Hawkins was able to confirm that an R F P for Title III funding that they use for things like Fuel Management Program and such will be hopefully out in the next one to two weeks, and this is for an estimated two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that those organizations and others can apply for, so she's trying to get that out so that we can get that money available to these groups. And did want to report, there was a county-wide training initiative that was, had big turnout and very strong support from all the different fire departments. Certainly I got direct reports that it was very effective training this year. And actually today there is air rescue training taking place. On C S A C, our C A O Trent Tuttle has set aside some time, as he told me, for us to discuss the funding of the National Center for Public Lands Counties, it was something that we've been mentioning before, that they were looking to see, just make, for us to make a decision about if we were going to fund that organization, and if so, how much? So I know that that's been on our list and it's, I understand, coming up here in one of our board meetings. With NorTech, I'm continuing my role as the Chair and facilitator of a new subcommittee, I think that work is coming along very well, and I'll have more to report on that in the future. The S C E D, which is, and I'm sorry, NorTech is, is work- The SKED, which is, and I'm sorry, uh, Nortech is, is workforce development related. Uh, SKED is more economic development related. Uh, I've mentioned before that we have a group that's working on a database to help us track all of our economic development efforts. Well, the executive director of SKED uh is now very interested in that work and is um trying to get more engaged with us, so he can see how that might actually potentially even be used outside of just what we're doing, doing within. The North Coast Resource Partnership, I'm actually the, one of the alternates for this. Um, but as I understand it, I'm the only one that's engaged with them so far. So they have a meeting coming up in July in Wyrica, so I am planning to attend that. They're gonna be working on strategic planning for that organization. And in talking with uh Nick at Watershed, he said that there's a lot of very important things to Trinity County. So I'm gonna make sure that um I'm there and represented. On the economic development uh ad hoc, oh, that's onto the committee, so I can hold that. Uh, the Trinity Lake and River Releases, uh, as we've heard today, a lot of work going on with that and something on the board. I am hosting a, a town hall meeting at the request of some residents in Trinity Center. It'll take place at the Otello's Hall on June 28th from 5:00 to 7:00 PM, and Trent is going to join me. It sounds like Tom will as well. That's great. Um, and then I did want to compliment um Trent for your work on, on Frontier Communications. I, you know, we kept trying to get their attention, and it seemed like we got their attention, but not necessarily results, and you're getting results, so thank you very much. I know that's uh well-needed. I'm sure Heidi would be here, thanking you very much from her standpoint. And, and the only other thing I wanted to mention, it was kind of related to what Ed was talking about with some of the environmental help, I think, but I had a meeting with two operators of water truck companies uh yesterday, and the message from them was basically, we think we're the only two. There might be one more completely legal compliant water truck delivery companies in the county, and we're about to go out of business because we're being undercut by all the illegals. And so we were trying to talk through what could we possibly do to help make sure that they can thrive because we need them, and we need it done legally and safely. Uh, so I'll, Trent, I'll, I'll begin with you, but I just wanted to kind of bring that up. Uh, they gave me some good information, and I've just gotta work it out in my head before I share it with you and then see what we might be able to do for them and for ourselves. And I'll save the rest for the committees. Thanks.
Very good. All right. All right. Can you post that, Ashley, or do you need a minute?
I hasn't emailed through yet.
Okay. I will do that last. All right. Um, let's see. On June 7th, I did attend the journal plan update meeting of the advisory groups and just want to express appreciation for the investment of time and the energy of those who are participating in that effort. Um, on June 9th, I attended a virtual seminar entitled Keeping Your Home Protected When Insurance Options Are Limited and Expensive, and it was put on by United Policyholders. The webinar covered what to do if your insurer non-renews you. Is it safe to insure your home through a company you've never heard of? What is the California Fair Plan and what options does it offer? What fine print matters when buying home insurance? And questions to ask to get adequate protection in place for your home. So I will email the slide deck and the um link. Really just need the link to the slide deck. You can grab it yourself online, and there's contact information there for folks who want to look into that. And the slide deck really did um move through in a way that um is, is helpful. And then there's places to ask questions for that, so I did find it informative. And it's an ongoing um kind of development. As more information comes out, things are um, you know, more options become available. That would be a place to go. See, we already spoke about that. Uh, June 16th, um, I did attend the Secure Rural Schools Adoption Process Training Webinar, and though we went through a, a bit of a re-adoption last year, we had the opportunity to change our allocation percentages between our Title II and Title III funding, and that was all submitted timely. This is the first year in 10 years that you can swap between SRS and the um, I forget what it's called, the, let's hear. The opposite of that, which is um significantly fewer funds. We would not want to swap, but we do want to be timely about um submitting our continued desire to be in the SRS allocation, and so just to know that admin is on that, and that's gonna happen um timely. Tomorrow, I will meet with Ale Damka of the UC Crawford Extension. We recall having a presentation by him and him sharing that as Trinity's participation. We have the opportunity to utilize his services, and one of them is to produce feasibility studies. And so De'Leen Donaldson and I will be visiting with him and asking about his uh availability and a timeline for him to produce a feasibility study for us on the uh revibrancy project for the CD Hall that we are desiring to see. I know I had shared before that there was kind of a redirection away from the need of a feasibility study, and those circumstances have changed slightly, and it may be something that is helpful in the future. And since it would come at no cost to the county, it certainly is worth the ask, so we'll be doing that. And then lastly, can you put that picture up now? So this is, this is fun. Um, and I've navigated away now from what I had, but um it's very exciting that our own Jeff England, associated there with Connor Nixon, were awarded um for their efforts in Trinity County on our food bank. And I had the original email from Erin Dunn and the the press release that was sent out on that. So it was decided, it looks like on May 30th, this presentation took place on June 7th. And um the press release, Trinity County Food Bank, under the leadership of Jeffrey England, is a nonprofit organization that distributes food commodities to low-income families in the area in which they live on a first-come-first-er basis. It describes itself as helping make the world around them a better, happier place. With the help of its staff, it organizes fundraisers, community building events, and in-depth training sessions for its volunteers. It's served the entire rural county since 1975 and has meant the difference between having a nutritious meal and hunger, and delivers food to county residents all year regardless of the weather or natural disaster. And he was awarded there by Assembly Member Wood um as the nonprofit of the year. So thank you to Jeff and Connor and the rest of your team for your efforts, and um very proud of you and very thankful for you. So that is the end of my report. We will now move on to reports from ad hocs. We have no one here from our Trinity County Water Ad Hoc, so we'll move on to our Cannabis Ordinance Update Ad Hoc.
Um, I think primarily the thing to report is we're in a holding pattern right now, uh, allowing staff to put everything together, and our next meeting won't be until July 7th. And then hopefully we'll have something to go over.
All right. Good. All right. We'll move on to economic development. Oh, I need to back up. I apologize. I did miss uh the uh update from the PSA II meeting. There's a couple of things here. We are now up to 53 participants in our direct service of uh meals through Dignity Health Connected Living. And um you, you can still participate in this, so reach out to the Nazarene Church. They are acting as the contact and site where um the, the meals are brought. So you can still participate, and uh they are all also considering opening up congregate meal delivery there in their fellowship hall, so that is uh yet to come. I want to really thank the three members of the advisory committee that serve Trinity County in this capacity, Benjamin Sarkisian, Bonnie Westbrook, and Melanie Miller. And at this meeting that we had yesterday, um annually, we do have a combined meeting with our advisory council and just really uh thank them for the time that they spend. They logged the hours collectively, and it was astonishing uh what these people do. And this is how we really do connect uh needs on the ground, needs in the community, these, that we can identify here uh to those places where those can be elevated for uh action. And so um just want to offer that acknowledgement and thanks to them. All right. Um, economic development, did you want to share?
Sure. Um, on economic development, uh, I, I mentioned this, I think, in the last meeting, but on June 28th, I'll be representing Nick from the Watershed at the Steering Committee meeting that's related to the SURF funding, and that's Community Economic Resilience Funding. But this is a bucket of about $5 million that will be available to our region to help flesh out plans, uh, economic development-related plans, so that they, those plans could then be ready for submission for access to hundreds of millions of dollars next year for implementation of those plans. So it's a great opportunity to sit in on the Steering Committee, see more about what they're doing, what, how it's going to work, so that we're fully ready to take advantage of that opportunity. Uh, also wanted to report the TOT-funded partners, we've been mentioning, they continue to work their efforts uh to collaborate for greater impact, and, and they've been releasing some of their work uh online recently, but I think has been well-received. And they are working on a request uh to come before the board. And uh I know that we're gonna be talking about allocation of some funding later today, and I'll mention more about it at that time. Uh, I did want to mention, I, I, just because there's so much going on, and I don't want to take up a lot of time here, I did release an economic development update with information about some of these key things that are happening uh regarding economic development in the community. And so uh that's available online. And uh we also have launched a Facebook page, uh Trinity County Economic Development, where we can start to let people share things that are going on, because I think there's just a lot more going on than people realize. And the more that we all know what's going on, we can help support it, we can get engaged with it. So uh look forward to seeing more activity there.
Right. Perfect. Thank you. All right. We'll move into the consent calendar. These items include routine, non-controversial matters, and will be acted upon by the board by one roll call motion. If a member of the public has any questions or comments on an item of the consent calendar, they may provide them now. A board, a member of the board or staff may request an item be polled and considered separately. Is there any public comment on the consent calendar? Seeing none in the room? Any on Zoom? Have Shantel.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Board. My name is Shantel Estes, and I'm the Program Manager for Housing and Homeless Programs. A few months back, I brought to your attention a few concerns during the Transportation Commission presentation. Since then, the Transportation Department has increased a critical route to five days a week. Since the route back and forth to Willow Creek has been added, I have been able to assist 18 individuals who were traveling on Highway 299 to their destination. When their route was closed two days a week, I drove 10 individuals to Willow Creek in a short period of time, and this was to make sure they didn't get stuck in Trinity County. My point to my comment today is to let you know they've listened to the community needs and have done a thorough job in accommodating Trinity County. With the collaboration of the County Transit Bus and the Blue Barn Bus, I've seen the needs being met. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Shantel. I have no other raised hands. All right. With that, we will close public comment. Um, we need to look at those items which need to be polled as they require four fifths of vote, and do we have those readily?
Oh, 3.8. 3.22 and 3.23.
All right. Um, aside from those, do supervisors wish to pull any other items for separate consideration?
No, but could you repeat those, please?
3.8, 3.22, and 3.23.
Thank you.
And um I will just if, ask you to give a brief uh explanation as to why we're pulling them.
Yes, ma'am. We just need to pull those because we uh only have a uh three-fifth majority of the board here today. We need a four-fifth for the budget adjustments.
And uh the time factor is not a concern?
It's, it's not a concern on, on those three. Uh, we will bring those back to the board on the 18th of July.
Perfect. Thank you. All right. Um, with that, it would entertain a motion on the balance of the consent calendar.
I'll move to adopt.
I'll second.
The motion by Supervisor Frazier, second by Supervisor Lutweller.
I have a question from a department.
Yes.
Do we want to call, roll call first, or take their question?
Uh, let's take the question first.
Jill? Can't hear you, Jill.
Can you hear me?
He can hear you now.
Okay, sorry. Um, I'd like to pull item 3.18. There was a, a revision that happened this morning that it just needed to let you know of.
All right. Thank you. So with that, um Supervisor Frazier, would you like to amend your motion to remove 3.18?
Sure.
And Supervisor Lutweller, would you second?
Yes.
All right. Um, so with the balance of those four items, the motion stands with Supervisor Frazier and seconded by Supervisor Lutweller, and you may now pull the board. Supervisor Lutweller?
Aye.
Supervisor Frazier?
Aye.
Chairman Cox?
Aye.
All right. Item 3.18. Moment. The sheriff. Approve an agreement with Daniel W. Harwood, MD, to perform autopsies on an as-needed basis, not to exceed $55,000 per fiscal year from the sheriff's budget. Jill, would you like to speak to that?
Um, yes. Thank you, Madam Chair and Board. Um, this item, there was um, in the insurance section, there was the commercial general liability that just yesterday afternoon was requested by the doctor to be removed. Um, I was able to speak with county council this morning, and Sean approved that. So it would just be the malpractice under the insurance and then workers' comp as well. That was the only revision.
So again, uh, just malpractice and workers' comp?
Yes.
Okay. And then um council, would you help to word this um as needed? Do we need, not sure how to move this item forward, do we just state it that way?
Abs- absolutely. A motion to approve as uh amended by the department to remove the section related to general liability insurance.
All right. Um, Ashley, have you captured that language? All right. Could I have a motion?
I move to approve. En amend.
All right. So we have a motion to approve as amended by Supervisor Lutweller, second by Supervisor Frazier. Supervisor Frazier?
Aye.
Supervisor Lutweller?
Aye.
Chairman Cox?
Aye. All right. Thank you for that, Jill.
Thank you.
All right. Public hearings. Solid Waste, item 4.1. Conduct a pair, a public hearing to consider taking action on protests regarding the number of units charged to residents or businesses for the solid waste annual parcel fees. Potential reduction of revenues in the amount of $100 per equivalent unit to the Solid Waste Enterprise Fund, and we have Diane Rader with us. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Diane Rader, Deputy Director of Solid Waste. This is the second public hearing and for our annual parcel fee to hear protests on the number of units that we assess when we send out our billing. The fees were established by resolution in March, and we build, sent the bills out in April, and the payments are due by June 30. We've worked on resolving any issues that have come to us that were uh mis-billings or adjustments that needed to be made. So I'm not aware of any other problems.
All right. Thank you. Any questions from supervisors? All right. Seeing none, we will open the public hearing. See no comment in the room. Is there any on Zoom?
I have no raised hands.
All right.
I've got a raised hand.
Okay. Amber?
Hi, everyone. Uh, thank you, Board and Chair. Um, I would just like to, to comment. I have um a commercial property with a small business that I run off of that commercial property, and I have a residential property, both in Weaverville. And I pay parcel tax, a $100 fee on both of them. And um I don't use, I mean, I don't use a significant amount um more that I feel like the tax would be warranted. So I, I would be a um proponent of uh allowing um the consolidations of parcel um taxes to the folks like me. Um, I'm not making money uh by renting my, my lot out. Um, I, so it's not a profitable um parcel. So I could see maybe that being a, a gray area, whereas if, you know, you have a, a tenant So I could see maybe that being a, a gray area, whereas if, you know, you have a tenant, say, renting a commercial property, then that would be a little different than running a business off of it, but hopefully that would be considered. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Amber.
Can you clarify that?
Would need to know the, the parcel or bill number, and I'd have to go through it to see what the actual billing was. It's something that they can contact the office. We're still within the period where we can make those adjustments.
Okay.
Or I need more information on it. But I did not bring my whole list of everybody billed and what all of the land use codes.
I can't imagine why.
And what would her deadline be?
It needs to be accomplished by June 30.
All right.
So that's so weak and half.
Okay. All right, so Amber, I see head nods, you're good. All right, great. Any other raised hands? All right, with that, we will close the public hearing. And I believe no action correct, Council? All right. All right, thank you, Diane. All right, county matters. Let's see. We'll take a 30-minute lunch break. We need to see if it can be concluded by a LAFCO 4 o'clock meeting. So we'll limit our lunch today to 30 minutes, and we will resume at 12:40.
All right. It is 12:44, a few minutes later back from lunch. I apologize for that. We are back in session. It is we are on county matters. These items include nonroutine or controversial matters and are listed alphabetically by department. A member of the board staff or public may request that an item be heard out of order. Is there any need to hear an item out of order today? All right, seeing none. Behavioral Health Services, item 5.1, introduce and waive the reading of an ordinance amending Trinity County Code Section 2.34.050 pertaining to Children and Families First Five Commission introduced June 21, 2016, no fiscal impact and representing the First Five Commission. Today, we have our Health and Human Services Director, Liz Hamilton.
Thank you, Chair. Members of the board. Our request is simple in nature. We are wanting to restructure our membership and amend it, rather, to align with the Health and Safety Code. And so moving our membership from nine commissioners to a minimum of five, not to exceed nine. Those are listed in our resolution. This will assist us in meeting quorum. Right now, we've had a request from our hospital administrator to withdraw. And I think this will just allow us to keep business moving. And so I would recommend that this be approved as is with an amendment on the signature page to reflect today's date.
Okay, great. Any questions from board members? All right, seeing none, we will open public comment. Is there any in the room? We have none, any on Zoom? We have no raised hands and no chats. We will close public comment and bring it back to the board. Could I have a motion on the item?
Motion to approve as presented.
Second. By Supervisor Luke Wyler, second. By Supervisor Frazier. Is there any discussion on the item? All right, we can pull the board. Supervisor Frazier?
Aye.
Supervisor Luke Wyler?
Aye.
Chairman Cox?
Aye. Motion passes.
County Administrative Office, item 5.2, introduce and waive the reading of an ordinance adding Trinity County Code Section 2.05-County SEAL, no fiscal impact, CAO Tet Hill.
Chair, so this proposal is to adopt an ordinance which will create some teeth in protecting our county seal from being inappropriately used in different forums. So other counties have done similar activities. There's really two options here. We can go the ordinance route, which is the proposed option. The other option in the staff report is do more of a trademark application and route. Worked with county council and that route is an option. It's a lengthy option and to actually enforce that option oftentimes involves litigation. And those fees are often quite expensive because those are very specialized type of litigators who do that, that type of work. So our proposal is to adopt a fairly simple ordinance, which then would allow us, if we see any use out there that is unauthorized or contrary to the good order and discipline of use of our seal, then we can work through county council and actually send letters and impose fines and take those kind of actions. So that's what the ask is and I'll leave it at that for now.
All right, thank you. Questions by board members? All right. With that, we will open public comment. Is there any in the room? Seeing none, any on Zoom?
I have no raised hands, no chats.
All right, we will close public comment, bring it back to the board. Could I have a motion on the item?
Motion to approve as presented.
Second.
By Supervisor Luke Wyler, second. By Supervisor Frazier. Is there any discussion on the item? All right, we can pull the board. Supervisor Frazier?
Aye.
Supervisor Luke Wyler?
Aye.
Chairman Cox?
Aye. Motion passes.
County Administrative Office, item 5.2, introduce and waive the reading of an ordinance adding Trinity County Code Section 2.05-County SEAL, no fiscal impact, CAO Tet Hill.
Chair, so this proposal is to adopt an ordinance which will create some teeth in protecting our county seal from being inappropriately used in different forums. So other counties have done similar activities. There's really two options here. We can go the ordinance route, which is the proposed option. The other option in the staff report is do more of a trademark application and route. Worked with county council and that route is an option. It's a lengthy option and to actually enforce that option oftentimes involves litigation. And those fees are often quite expensive because those are very specialized type of litigators who do that, that type of work. So our proposal is to adopt a fairly simple ordinance, which then would allow us, if we see any use out there that is unauthorized or contrary to the good order and discipline of use of our seal, then we can work through county council and actually send letters and impose fines and take those kind of actions. So that's what the ask is and I'll leave it at that for now.
All right, thank you. Questions by board members? All right. With that, we will open public comment. Is there any in the room? Seeing none, any on Zoom?
I have no raised hands, no chats.
All right, we will close public comment, bring it back to the board.
I move to approve as presented.
I will second.
Right, we have a motion by Supervisor Luke Wyler, second. By Supervisor Frazier. Supervisor Frazier?
Aye.
Supervisor Luke Wyler?
Aye.
Chairman Cox?
Aye. Motion passes.
Item 5.3, adopt a resolution which adopts the preliminary budget for fiscal year 2324, including reserves, enterprise funds, and dependent special districts in the amount of $150,980,000.
All right, it is 12:44, a few minutes later back from lunch, apologize for that. We are back in session. We are on county matters. These items include non-routine or controversial matters and are listed alphabetically by department. A member of the board staff or public may request that an item be heard out of order. Is there any need to hear an item out of order today? All right, seeing none, Behavioral Health Services, item 5.1. Introduce and waive the reading of an ordinance amending Trinity County Code Section 2.34.050 pertaining to Children and Families First Five Commission, introduced June 21st, 2016. No fiscal impact and representing the First Five Commission. Today, we have our Health and Human Services Director, Liz Hamilton.
Thank you, Chair, members of the board. Our request is simple in nature. We are wanting to restructure our membership and amend it, rather, to align with a Health and Safety Code. And so moving our membership from nine commissioners to a minimum of five, not to exceed nine. Those are listed in our resolution. This will assist us in meeting quorum. Right now, we've had a request from our hospital administrator to withdraw. And I think this will just allow us to keep business moving. And so I would recommend that this be approved as is with an amendment on the signature page to reflect today's date.
Okay, great. Any questions from board members? All right, seeing none, we will open public comment. Is there any in the room? We have none, any on Zoom? We have no raised hands and no chats. We will close public comment and bring it back to the board. Could I have a motion on the item?
Motion to approve as presented.
Second.
By Supervisor Luke Wyler, second by Supervisor Frazier. Is there any discussion on the item? All right, we can pull the board. Supervisor Frazier?
Aye.
Supervisor Luke Wyler?
Aye.
Chairman Cox? Aye, motion passes. County Administrative Office, item 5.2. Introduce and waive the reading of an ordinance adding Trinity County Code Section 2.05-County SEAL. No fiscal impact, CAO Tet Hill.
Chair, so this proposal is to adopt an ordinance which will create some teeth in protecting our county seal from being inappropriately used in different forums. So other counties have done similar activities. There's really two options here. We can go the ordinance route, which is the proposed option. The other option in the staff report is do more of a trademark application and route. Worked with county council and that route is an option. It's a lengthy option and to actually enforce that option oftentimes involves litigation. And those fees are often quite expensive because those are very specialized type of litigators who do that, that type of work. So our proposal is to adopt a fairly simple ordinance, which then would allow us, if we see any use out there that is unauthorized, contrary to the good order and discipline of use of our seal, then we can work through county council and actually send letters and impose fines and take those kind of actions. So that's what the ask is, and I'll leave it at that for now.
All right, thank you. Questions by board members? All right. With that, we will open public comment. Is there any in the room? Seeing none, any on Zoom? I have no raised hands, no chats. All right, we will close public comment, bring it back to the board.
Move to approve as presented.
I will second.
Right, we have a motion by Supervisor Luke Wyler, second by Supervisor Frazier. Supervisor Frazier?
Aye.
Supervisor Luke Wyler?
Aye.
Chairman Cox? Aye. Motion passes. Item 5.3, adopt a resolution which adopts the preliminary budget for fiscal year 2324, including reserves, enterprise funds, and dependent special districts in the amount of $150,987,741. And this would be our CAO.
Thank you, Chair. So this is the initial stages of the annual budget adoption process. And the proposal is, as you read it there, we're also wanting to get the board approval to set aside some, from a budget authority perspective, some of the use of the the quote, you know, 4.8 million that's been floating around. It's officially the local assistance and tribal consistency funds. It's $4.8 million the county was allocated. As all counties throughout California allocated, obviously different amounts, but 4.8 million was our amount. And we have gone through a fairly extensive process, its staff, as far as collecting requirements, prioritizing those, putting them in different buckets, meeting as department heads, and working through that. These, this request are, again, budget authorities. Some of these are exact amounts because we've got exact quotes and we know the specific amounts. Others are that authority and then we'll get the exact amounts and the amount should come in at or below the request. My proposal would be we walk through the LAT CF fund items. And if there's any questions there, we can work through those. And then we'll go into the larger budget of the 150 million. And if there's any questions on that, I will be happily calling on Susie to help me out there.
All right. Do we have preliminary questions of supervisors?
Just one, can we pass this without a forfeits majority? That would be my question of council.
Adoption. Adoption of budget requires a simple majority. It's amendment to the budget that requires the four fifths vote.
Okay, just wanted to make sure before we get too far.
Okay. All right, with that, we will open public comment. Any in the room? Seeing none, any on Zoom? Carla Avila?
Hello, good afternoon, Chair Cox, members of the board. This is Carla Avila from Hyland Palm. And I am the Executive Director of Trinity County Arts Council here today on behalf of the TOT Tourism Marketing Partners Group. As the CAO and the board look at the upcoming budget plan, we wanted to highlight that the TOT partners are currently working together to develop a plan, which we plan to present to the board in July, working on the formation and development of a unified organization to steer tourism in an impactful way, eliminate redundancies, utilize limited funds and volunteer time more efficiently, and really see what we can do about tourism in Trinity County. One minor example of an outcome of our partnership has been that the visitor center will be relocating to a new building in partnership with the Highland Arts Center to better serve the public. However, we see many more examples of yet unmet opportunity in tourism for Trinity. And today, we are asking the board to consider setting aside some funding dedicated to this cause. So historically, the TOT partners used to receive approximately, I think it was 150,000 per year, with the Trinity County Chamber receiving half of that towards a paid executive director and part-time staff in charge of marketing the county and running the visitor center. A previous board reduced that amount to 70,000 and staff could no longer be paid. Adjusted for inflation, when you look at $70,000 in 2003, that would be over $117,000 today. And out of our 70,000 that's currently dedicated to tourism, the Historical Society receives 27 per year of that via a separate contract. But that comes out of the 70, which actually leaves the other TOT partners with a total, grand total of $43,000 to work with towards tourism. And we've spent approximately 50,000 on advertising alone in the last year. So what we're seeing here is that additional funding is definitely needed primarily to hire staff to allow us to really take marketing of Trinity County to the next level. So this would not be able to replace the hundreds and hundreds of volunteer hours. We have over $200,000 worth of free labor per year between all of the TOT partners. But this would augment this in a very significant way because most importantly, we need this investment in dedicated staffing capacity and resources to just really strategically amplify tourism in Trinity County from an organized place. And what we're seeing in our neighboring counties in Shasta and Siskiyou, when they've made this investment, is just staggering. We need to see these benefits in Trinity. So we're asking for $100,000 a year for the next three years towards unified organization, plus our 70,000 in TOT, plus the Historical Society. And we look forward to presenting our plan to you next month. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you, Carla. I have no other raised hands, no chats. All right, with that, we will close public comment and bring it back to the board. And I would say, yes, we should take CAO Tet Hill's recommended strategy of moving item by item through these recommended expenditures for the local assistance and travel consistency funds.
Okay, so if it's all right, I'll just take each item, just quickly describe it and then pause for questions and then address any questions and we'll move on.
Thank you.
Okay, so the first item Supervisor Luke Wyler had, has made reference to this in a couple of different forms to include today's meeting. But this was a request, or is a request from NACO, so the National Association of Counties. Shortly after these funds became available, the organization of the National Center for Public Lands Counties was established as a subsidiary of NACO in a nonprofit fashion to advocate on behalf of all the counties in California for not only the, these types of funds, but how these funds are used and future potential built and SRS type of issues. So their request was 1% from each county, California-wide. And our allocation of that would be $96,360. I've requested that a representative from this National Center for Public Lands Counties come and do a presentation to the board. So the board will have more education on this and be able to make an informed, educated decision on it. The request today is simply to set aside this amount from a budget authority perspective in the event the board voted on it and wanted to use the money in this method. That would allow us to do it prior to any final budget adoption by the first of October. So if we had that, you know, meeting either the 18th of July or sometime before October and the board voted on this particular one, we could then use these funds towards that if that was what the board voted for.
And that concept is going to be the request with, or going to be the case, rather, with each of these items. This is a preliminary authority to do so before the final budget is adopted.
Yes, but on the other ones, we were actually, we will go and start using the money if that is what's approved today.
Okay, I see. For budget allocation purposes.
We're just not quite ready for this one yet, but I didn't want to wait until final budget adoption in October, entire hands to that. If over the next three months, this organization was able to come up, give the presentation, and if the board chose to vote on it, we could actually get them the funds and then start receiving some of those benefits.
Okay. So the only question I have is to do with risk. And if we jump in and, you know, while 1% doesn't sound like maybe much to us, it's a lot. And how will we gauge how successful we think NACO will be at achieving this objective? Obviously, if they do that, significant to us.
Very good question. And I would propose that those type of questions be asked to the representative who would come to the board. And we'll then talk through that and then the board can make a decision. Is that something that is of importance enough to Trinity County to use 1% of our funds for that?
So basically, this just gives us the opportunity to be able to dive in. We're not committed.
Exactly, it gives us that option. Yes, this is not a commitment for this particular one to actually spend those funds.
Okay. Other questions?
No.
All right, let's move on to the next item.
Okay, so item number two here is for some items to properly store the amount of records that we are required to keep as a county. And this is not just your standard shelving unit that you or I would go and pick out for a residential or a commercial type of organization. This is actually a tracked storage mechanism. I don't know if you've ever heard the term like lecturer before, but it's basically a method that is on tracks. You store a lot of material on a vertical methodology. And when you go to call that particular item, it then moves it to where it's accessible. It's not just like a static storage on the shelving unit. That's why it's a little more expensive than you would think. We could go down and buy a commercial static shelving unit.
And is this a, again, this is kind of a ceiling and we're looking into?
This is the absolute ceiling, yeah, yeah.
So it may be?
It may be. What we did for all these is we went out, you know, when the previous interim CA was here, Letty and then Liz, some of the, the process was to go out and get quotes for these things. But obviously, those are not stagnant. I mean, they only last so long. So we're comfortable with the ceiling, that it'll come in below that. But, you know, whether it comes in at 900 or $9,099 or, you know, $9,500, it's just going to depend upon what the market is going to bear today versus, you know, six to nine months ago when we went out and got quotes for these things.
Okay. Questions?
No, I think it would be helpful, though, Train, I'm sure that you had requests that far exceeded the amounts that you're presenting to us. So can you just, then maybe just a minute?
Process.
Kind of how you went through and, because you had to already vet down a list to show us what you're showing us. And it'd be helpful, I think.
Certainly. So this, the process was when these funds were received, approximately November of last year, shortly after that, previous interim CAO went out to all the departments and started to get a consolidated list of what are the county needs that are out there. That list was put together. I've got that list. It was revised some by Liz when she was in the seat. And then once I got in there, I looked at it and I basically put it in into three categories. First is more like a health and safety category. Second was it's needed for the county and it affects daily county operations. And then third would be it's needed for the county. It increases efficiencies and effectiveness of whatever department that may be. So went through and each of those items are now in buckets on this big spreadsheet. We have about to the tune of just shy of $12 million in needs that are out there that have been validated by the department heads and would fit into one of those categories. There is a high expectation, the way these funds were allocated through the Department of Treasury at the federal level, that we will see the second tranche of these funds in the October-November timeframe of this calendar year of an additional $4.8 million. Those funds have in fact been, you know, allocated through the federal process. And, you know, pending any big changes from the federal level, we are expecting those funds. So in the process of what we went through, I put them in either round one or round two categories. And all the ones you're seeing today are in round one, either in bucket A, B, or C, depending upon the category. And we were able to work through those and still have a little bit of, quote, excess because we're not requesting the full 4.8 to be authorized to use today. Because I think it's prudent to keep some of that in reserve. If we don't get that additional 4.8, we're obviously going to then need to reprioritize and, you know, look at what our county needs are at that point in time because they will in fact change. This is a revolving, ever-changing set of needs, depending upon, you know, what actually happens throughout the county.
And then I also understand from talking to Susie that we actually, I guess it depends on where the money is actually coming from, but dipped into this a little bit when we funded the cannabis division to finish out this year while there was no income coming in to that group, about half of which was, I'll call gifted and/or contributed. And the other half that was loaned, so could be repaid over X number of years. So that's also something that you're counting on in here.
Correct.
Okay.
That will be part of that. And during the final budget hearings and final budget adoption, you will see those numbers come forth.
And I think you also indicated that, and just mentioned, an amount that was left not allocated. And was that 150,000 or something like that?
No, the amount of the 4.8 that's not allocated is about 1.2. That's not allocated, that we're not asking for right now.
Okay.
So that's the amount.
Thank you.
And could I be reminded, I mean, I could do the math backward, but remind us how much we took out when we made the decision to move funds for cannabis?
That was about 480, if I recall right, of the overall, because there was 500 that was.
Total was like 996 or something.
Susie can.
971,000 and some change. And 450,000 of it was given as a contribution and 521 was given as a loan to be repaid back over the next five years.
Right.
Perfect, thank you. And considering that I, as just one supervisor, would very much like to see our TOT partners receive some funding. Where do we think, I would ask where you would think? And maybe that's really not fair right now, and I get it. I'm kind of uncomfortable asking this question, but at the same time, if you didn't have that for consideration, and I see a very strategically laid-out thoughtful plan with your categories in round one, round two. If we move forward with all of these and we realize we only have 1.2 million left that's not allocated and we have great need still out there, how can we think about what might be possible for discussion later?
So I think it's very much an option if the board chooses to put that on there. I mean, based upon the comment from Carla and, you know, the discussion today, we can put it on the list today and then see where it, you know, where it will rack and stack. I think that in my mind, just doing some quick thoughts would be probably category 1C, meaning, you know, this is going to improve efficiency and effectiveness of operations of the county as a whole. And then we would just, you know, factor that into what's, what other competing requirements are there for that remaining 1.2. If in fact, we say hypothetically, we don't get the additional 4.8, which I think it's very highly likely we are going to get that. But until we see that in our bank account, you know, we're not going to make any real decisions based upon how to use that.
So we could treat it much like we did the first bullet point for the NACO funding, where we might set it aside if we chose to do so. But then we wait basically for the presentation from that group, just like we're waiting for the NACO presentation. And then the board makes a final formal decision.
Correct.
So would it be possible to ask to add that to our bullet points today? To set it aside as the NACO is so that if that was a decision, we would have that and not have to wait? Or in this case, it could come after final budget adoption and not make a difference?
Go ahead.
My request.
My request would be that since it's not already factored in here, it's easier would be to make, have that part. Let that presentation happen, have that discussion. You can give that direction after that presentation. And then we can factor that into final budget that gets presented to you at budget hearings at the end of September. And then final budget adoption in a special meeting shortly after, prior to October 1st. And I would like to clarify some numbers. So of the numbers that's here, that 3.6, that does not include the 450,000 that was given. So we are, we have about 679,000 after we get the repayment back from cannabis of the original 4.8 that is currently not allocated, only 158,000 that hasn't temporarily been used.
Okay, so the 1.2 is really six something when we get back, if when we get back the money from the cannabis division and totally not allocated in any way by these bullet points that we're going over or anything else is this 150,000 that I had in my head?
158, yeah.
158, okay. So one other question while you're there, Susie, if we, am I correct that if we treated it, if we added it today like we have with this first bullet point for the National Center for Public Lands where we're saying, we're setting it aside in case we choose to do this when they present. Then as soon as they present, if we said yes, then it's money that can be used because we're approving it now as part of the preliminary budget. If we wait and do it later, then that money could not be allocated until October, assuming we approve in September, the final budget.
Correct.
Okay.
Because we wouldn't have a budget allocation. We wouldn't have a budget allocation in order to give the expenditure.
Right.
So the consideration would be, does the fund, do the funds need to be provided prior to October 2nd?
Yeah. And I guess the question would be, what impact, if the whole point is that it's going to help drive tourism, which will help our economy, does having that be able to be funded in July and start to look for somebody and to start spending money? Would it have a bigger impact than waiting until October?
And just for clarification, it would only need to wait till October to do it on the budget, but you could do a budget adjustment prior with a four-fist vote. Yes, with a four-fist vote.
We don't do budget adjustments to our preliminary budget.
I appreciate that, but you can legally do that.
By process, we don't. Legally, you can. Okay.
Legally, yes, you can. We do not do budget adjustments to our preliminary budget because it's not final and it's still in process and it makes it harder on the behind the scenes pieces of the budget development, the actual final budget development.
And I think one more thing, Susie, just why we've got you there for questions is, so if we wanted to add the amount here and we were trying to save the 300,000 that Carla mentioned, and we really only have 150 that we haven't allocated, we really don't have it to allocate.
We can't do a full 300,000 allocation at this point in time until we get money back from cannabis because we don't have the money there. It's already been put out, but we could allocate.
But we don't, we don't need the full 300,000, though. It doesn't sound like that would be an out year. So it sounds like the real ask right now is 100. With a firm commitment of the additional 100 on an annual basis.
And really more like 127, because I lost Carla's note. It looks at 27,000 a year is contractually designated to Historical Society. Is that the right number out of the 70,000?
Sounds, I don't know specifically, but it sounds.
I had 24 in my head, but it's in the neighborhood.
It's, yeah.
But she, I think, has looked this up. So really what they're asking, it's it's a bit misleading, I think, to this whole group to say that 70,000 comes for this tourism marketing when what goes to the Historic Society is for some very specific purposes and contractually obligated. It's not something that is something that we can really make a decision on. So I think the ask is to pull that out so that what we're looking at, and it's probably a whole other process to do that. But for purposes of thinking about dollars today, they would like to see full 70,000 and add an extra 100,000 to that over the next three years. So we're really asking for 124-ish to 27-ish thousand.
And the only other piece of the puzzle that I think we would need to consider if we're get to a point of having a motion to add this is the, the concept that the group is pursuing is the 100,000 a year for over three years is so that they could hire someone and have, no, they have a three-year runway for that person to then basically get self-funded. You know, generate enough business, go get grants, set up a tourism investment district, lead a successful TOT increase, whatever it might be, where then we don't have to keep giving that money because it's being basically generated as a result of having that person. So the 100,000, you wouldn't want to go hire somebody and say, well, we got enough to pay for a year. But I guess if we did put at least the 100,000 in, then when they came and presented, if we felt like we were in a position to make a commitment that we will find a way to fund you for another two years at this level, however, we might get to that point, we're not in that point today, then at least the money would be available to them to start using right away. Otherwise, it would all just have to wait until October, which, yeah, I'm just trying to make sure I understand, right? Not make a proposal at this moment.
Susie, if we did the, for ease of numbers today, if we, if the board wanted to add 100 on there for now to get the process going during budget hearings and during final budget adoption, could we then factor that into the discussions as far as how that would be funded in the out years?
To fund the additional 200,000, exactly?
Yes.
Yeah, we could factor that into that final budget discussion, which would be more of a theoretical and how are we planning to do it? Because it would require a budget action in this fiscal year's budget.
Would be more of a planning factor and what we as a county are willing to commit to so appropriate agencies can make plans.
Yep.
Yeah. But because we only do an annual commitment for budget, we could only, you know, do with a firm commitment for the one year, but we could make, you know, firm commitment plans to say, yes, this is going to be funded for the next two years.
Yeah, when we were first discussing this, my thought was we basically set aside a full 300,000 and that's how we can commit. We're going to have this in a fund that you'll get 100,000 a year for the next few years. We just don't have that money right now. So that's what you're saying?
Correct. And as we work through, you know, the building, cannabis building, as we work through some of these other final numbers, I mean, some of these may come in a little less than that. Some of these may not, but I mean, we may have some flexibility. And then if, like I said, if we get this additional 4.8, you know, that's another topic of discussion for a firm commitment from that.
And to add to that just a little bit, because of we only budget annually, the, we can only allocate the one year's allocation unless we're going to give it to them in full in advance.
Oh, I see.
Because every year, we're going to have to bring a budget to you that includes that 100,000 and the five of you or whoever's sitting in those seats at that time is going to make that decision to determine whether or not that funding level continues from a budget allocation perspective.
Okay, I thought we would be treating it more like a general, not general fund, general plan fund where we put money in there and that's all it's for.
We, there, we wouldn't have any requirements to create a special revenue fund where therefore we wouldn't have any justification to create a special revenue fund to set them aside for anything else.
Well, we're getting into the weeds that probably need to be part of that discussion when we actually have a presentation from the group and the board as a whole can decide. But I think I'm leaning towards what you're saying, that at least if we did something today, there's something that could be acted on much, much sooner than if we wait and have to try to add it all later.
In, not to try to ride a dead horse, but the extra $27,000 does matter. I know when we're talking about 4.8 million, 27,000 doesn't feel like much, but when you're looking at their budget and what they need to spend and what they need to do, $27,000 is a lot of money. And so I would, if we're going to talk about it, I would prefer that we talk about the whole amount.
Yeah, and which I got, if we're, I was really trying to get to all the questions. But if we want to make a motion to add it to the list, then I guess then we could have discussion about how much of that.
You may want to just consider adding that in the final motion when we go through and talk all these and just add a line item in there for 127,000 for TOT right now. And I mean, we, Susie will probably shoot me, but we do have, you know, we do have that money to allocate at this time.
Okay. By your presence, I assume you would like me to reopen public comment.
Well, my question is.
Well, I will have to reopen public comment. Go ahead.
My statement is, is that the Historic Society gets an annual amount of money set aside for them. So why would this be any different than for the TOT? Because they get it every year automatically. So apparently there is a, there is a way of doing that.
Thank you. And we'll get your question answered. Is there any other public comment in the room? And is there anyone on Zoom who would like to raise their hand and participate in the second public comment area? I have no raised hands. We'll give a moment since it kind of came on suddenly. Okay, still no raised hands. All right, we will close that public comment. And then, Susie, would you go ahead and answer our question?
The reason that the Historical Society is guaranteed that money is there is a contract that indicates that we are required to give that contribution.
And that contract is under a certain period of time, or do you know?
Off the top of my head, I don't know.
Okay.
I'd have to go find it and.
So there, in other words, you think there is a period of time, you're just not sure what it is? Or you're not sure if there is a period of time?
I don't know if it has a term on it or if it was an ongoing. I'd have to.
Okay, fair.
And look, I haven't looked at it that closely.
Fair. Thanks.
And Trent, you were saying that go through the list and then if we want to make a motion to adjust for that.
To adopt all the lists, whatever we adjust, whatever the board wants to adjust numbers around, we just adopt all of the LATCF funds and let that be known in a standalone. And then we work unless there's other ways that we need to procedurally do it, but.
All of the expenditures for the LATCF funds that are outlined in the staff report are included in the preliminary budget that is presented to you. So my request would be that you have one motion that adopts the resolution adopting the preliminary budget as presented or with whatever modifications you're wanting to make in regards to the potential funding for the TOT.
Make it all one motion.
Make it all one motion.
We could just adopt the preliminary budget and then make sure we outline those specific items that we're talking through for LATCF funds.
Okay, I think I understand. So with that, we'll move on to our next item for description.
So the next items, there's actually, it's a, there's three items that include, that are included in the 900,000. So these are all for DOT pieces of equipment. One's a patch truck, one's an asphalt paver, and one is what they call a multi-hog. So the patch truck is a piece of equipment that's needed to basically keep asphalt hot as you take it to a job site. As you know, the county is fairly large from a geographic perspective. And is what historically happens is by the time the asphalt actually gets to a site, it goes below 200 degrees and you lose efficiency and effectiveness of what that patch is going to do or what that segment of road is going to do. And it's going to not have the nearly as long of a lifespan as it should if it was appropriately asphalted. So this will allow DOT road crews themselves to go out and do a significantly larger projects and more projects if they have this, this particular piece of equipment. Now, on these three pieces of equipment, you know, to be fully transparent, there is about a six to nine month lead time with these. So if we get authorization today, you know, we will start taking actions to get these pieces of equipment officially under contract. And we will probably see them for the next actual construction season after next winter. So next spring, you would actually see these pieces of equipment out on site doing work. Unless we just happen to get lucky and find the exact equipment that we need sitting on somebody's lot with. But based upon our research, that's fairly low probability. The next piece of equipment is actually an asphalt paver. So you will, you will see those at various sites around with the Caltrans and with TOLOS and other companies that do this around here. This one is, is the same type of that, but just a smaller version of that. The larger versions obviously cost a lot more money, but we will be able to do all county road type of projects that are needed with this size of paper. Obviously, you're not going to go and redo miles and miles and miles, but this will get us, you know, the hundreds of feet maybe to, you know, a couple of hundred feet stretches that wash out that need some sort of road repair done to them. So that's the small paver. And then the multi-hog machine is something that is going to replace our two existing mowers that we have right now. Those are heavily used with the exception of they've got the 200-hour cap on them via the Clean Air Program that the state of California has. So we use those. They're old. They're about 1980s type vintage equipment. They're a standalone, the current one is a standalone tractor and it's got basically an arm on it, a mowing arm that can go along and move around and for various terrain features. So this multi-hog has not only mowing capability similar to that, but it also has snow removal capability and a possibility where you hook a piece of equipment on that acts as a water tender on all of the same equipment. They're, they're being used by other counties right now. We're getting a demo of one in the July time period. Panelists is working that to get a piece of equipment up here. But that will replace our two mower capabilities and then also be used for snow removal in the wintertime. Basically, it'll, instead of having to bring the snow up in the center line when you have high snow amounts, this is actually a blower and it can, it can blow the snow out of there. So it will reduce the amount of time we'll need to use the graders that also have unfortunately hours restriction on them as well.
A question, a lot of times these kinds of capital investments come with other costs like insurance and personnel training and all those sorts of things. I also assume there are savings because we, the way we have to do things today is more costly because of how we do that. But were you able to do enough work on this to know that net is this going to not, we're not going to then have a big increase later because now we have to pay $50,000 in insurance that we didn't have to before and train or hire new people and things like that?
No, the training for the paving equipment is the crews pretty much already know how to use those as of right now. The multi-hog equipment does come with some training and some basic, you know, user operator type of training for a small number. But then that can be just done on an in-house basis, once we know how to do that. And then most of the maintenance after the, you know, warranty period will be done in in-house.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And is there any chance that there could be some savings realized by not having to do things however we did them before? Or was it just that, no, we didn't really get to accomplish any of this before?
The multi-hog machine could potentially create some man-hour type of savings because it, the mowers that we need to use right now are fairly inefficient and they require a lot of maintenance. So between those two, we could see some man-hour savings with that. The pavers will basically allow us to do more work and we won't have to be as reliant on subcontractors to go out and get these small projects done, which is very, very difficult to get a paving company to come and do a 100-foot section of road or a small, you know, segment of road.
Probably all the savings of time and money from not doing all those RFPs would be good.
There could be some of that as well.
Okay, great.
Any other questions on that line item? Okay, the next line item. Okay, the, the next line item. The next proposal is for a million dollars to set aside for the county road match for storm damaged roads. We're currently going through the process. Panos has presented in different forums, the numbers we have, it's well in excess of, you know, a hundred different projects out there for the tune of about, it's like $70 million or so of, it's actually more than that, I think. It's grown like literally every week, but it, it's a high number that we have. This county match is more for the, I would consider them the more current storm damaged roads that we're, that we know we're going to have county matches for. A lot of the older stuff is, is covered under FEMA. We will also have a county match for those. It's, it's a little bit reduced, but we will still have a county match for, for roads, a county match for those road repairs as well. So this is, this is not going to cover the full amount of the county match for all of our road damage that's out there. If you go back to, we're still working projects from 2016 under the whole FEMA process and everything. But if you go back, this will cover a a sizable portion of that. And then this will not be needed to take, be taken out of the D O T annual budget that we get for just normal road repair and maintenance, irregardless of any storm damage we have. So I think this is a prudent use of that money to have as these projects come in and as we will start to owe a county match for these. And then the next one down there is for the known damage at Canyon Creek Road. That topic has come before the board at numerous times. That project is actually now complete. The big spider web is up there. And, you know, that bill is in fact upon us. So that one, I know there was talk in various forums when that emergency came up and the board said, go do that project, that we would figure out the, the million dollar match. And now we're figuring out the million dollar match. The $200,000 for Department of Transportation repair projects, so East Weaver and Oregon Street Culverts. These are projects that have been on the books for a little while. There's a partnership with five counties that does restoration work. And equip or materials have already been ordered for these projects. This is the county match portion of that project to repair Culverts, Oregon Street there, right off of Maine as it goes underneath. There's some work that needs to be done there and there's some guardrail work that needs to be done around there. The, both of these will allow adequate fist passage and also increased capacity during storms. So we are in a good position right now as a county where none of the regulatory agencies are coming after us and looking for, hey, are you doing enough for fist restoration? Are you doing enough to where you're not, you know, gilling fish? And one dead fish is a $10,000 fine per dead fish. So we're not in that boat at all. We're in good condition there. But these projects are to help remediate those issues and they've already been planned. They've already been in the books a while. Like I said, five counties and Mark Lynn Castor have already done the preliminary engineering, the design on them, and we're ready to execute. It's just a matter of, you know, committing these, these funds towards it. And like I said, that the material has already been ordered for these. Going down to the next item there, like to set aside 25,000 for, for new carpet and chairs in this room. Some people might question the validity of that, but it's actually under the, the safety perspective. If you notice walking in here, there are physical tears and shreds starting to come up in the carpet. And those are in fact tripping hazards. So as we have members of the public come in here and walk around and as this room is used for many other forums from a public perception, other than just this one board meeting every two weeks, there is a lot of public use to this. And I don't want the county to be liable for a potential lawsuit if somebody was to, to get hurt on that, or one of our potential broken, broken chairs. And just as an example, we have had issues with chairs being broken and people sitting in them. And we have faced issues with that from a litigation perspective. So we're just trying to avoid that for what I consider a relatively good use of those funds, going to relatively low cost. The next one down is 354,450. That is actually for the re-roof of the courthouse. You may ask why we're talking about it here. And there's also another agenda item on it for the actual contract. So if the board approves this item to be funded via L A T C F funds, we will immediately execute the contract that we have set up and we will start work. The 90 day perfider performance will start tomorrow on the courthouse re-roof project and it should be done mid, mid September. That project is, is not an easy one. That is obviously an old historic building. There are actually three segments of that roof up there, three different sections that have different layers in them. Mike and General Services team have done a great job. And then after we got the bid in, TVCA actually run, ran that process for us. Once we got the bid in, there were some contingencies on that bid. So we had a site visit come out and they actually did some bore holes and they actually mitigated those contingencies. So we know exactly what is in each section of that roof as far as layers and that kind of stuff. Now we are asking for a, it's about a 10% contingency. It's come down to like an 11.4% contingency for that, because there still could be some roof rot underneath there. There could be some issues we're going to come up with, and I would just not rather come back to the board, you know, to ask for a $2,000 to $5,000 increase, meaning because we'd have to stop the contractor, we'd have to do some of those things. So if we get this authority now and we can put this under contract, and as long as it's within that 11.4% variance, we, we can, we can allow that to go on. And that is going to eliminate some active leaks in that facility come the rainy season again. We do have roof leaks and it actually goes from the top all the way down to the third floor and the basement area where we've got some old issues and that kind of stuff. So this is no kidding, trying to mitigate some future issues that we have.
Yeah, the cost of repairing damage from leaking roofs can exceed this number if it gets out of control.
Very, very quickly. Yes. Yes. Then the next item down there is $47,000 for, $840 for the treasure, treasure tax collector. So we've been working with Terry on this and, you know, just the realities of the situation right now is the way this is done is on Excel spreadsheets and manual mail outs and manual mail list and trying to do these things. What I would consider not in the 21st century and using the technology that we have out there. So she's done some research and she's figured out, you know, a methodology to go and make their daily processes much more efficient. And our ability to actually, you know, accurately collect the taxes on the cultivation operations that are happening in an, in an appropriate way. So again, I think this is a, a good use for us as, as the program, as you're hearing, it's becoming much more of a viable, sustainable, long-term program. And we're not talking about just a, you know, handful of licenses. When you're talking about 170 plus licenses, going up to, you know, we have 440 submit or 400s or so submitted, you know, we get those going over the next few months. I mean, that is going to be a lot of workload just to maintain that, that amount of administration with the, the tax collection on that.
And you know, I, when I was at CSAC, I saw a vendor that had something like this and it was integrated with the state's program so that we could basically see exactly what the state's seen, they could see what we're seeing. And, and so it's a unified look at what's going on for that particular cultivation operation or whatever. Is, is this one of those?
That's from, from what I understand, that's the concept. I will have to verify all the intricacies of that with, with Terry before we go out and, and make the final purchase on this. But that's the desire is to where the systems will actually talk with one another. And we won't be doing work in these individual buckets, just on a standalone spreadsheet.
Yeah. I, I mean, I think a valid point is last year, or maybe this year, but before, we had a meeting where we were talking about, I think whether or not taxes should be reduced and this and that. And, and we were hearing about, well, the state has collected this money. But we weren't collecting any because we didn't have our program in place. And so you couldn't collect if you didn't have a permit in place. And so that thing of being able to tie those two together and know, well, if there's state taxes being paid, well, then there should be county taxes being paid and we can
Correct.
really potentially get some benefit out of that.
Correct.
Thank you.
And I would think that such a program would also be a benefit to the licensee as well as the county for clarity purposes.
Yes, we would know exactly, you know, where the numbers are coming from and there wouldn't be any questions. It would be a known, just be, it would be known data sets versus unknowns. And then the, the final one on the list is 54,470. This is for some IT replacing fiber lines between the courthouse and, and this facility, and then also some new fiber out to the Hayford Community Center and Sheriff Substation. These projects have been on the, you know, in the planning phase and on the books for a while. The, the need is there and Mike and the IT department can go and, and make this happen. That's going to increase our, not only the speed, but the, the connectivity, but also the, the reliability of these station, of these different buildings and out, outlying facilities.
And, and again, the contracts are already in place, they just need to be funded?
These, the bids are already in place for this. We don't have standing contracts for these, but it, it will happen fairly quickly.
Right. Okay. Any other questions? Right. Would somebody care to make a motion?
Yeah, I think based on what we were describing earlier, I would move to approve with the addition of $127,000 for the T O T funded partners to support increased investment in efforts to drive tourism. And I don't know if it needs to be worded in here, but basically treating it like we're treating bullet point one, where we'll make a formal decision about awarding it when a presentation is made, probably in July. But we're setting that money aside at this point by this vote, so that it could come out of this preliminary budget.
And so in that, your request is to increase Department 8114, account 5500, Department 3300, account 9800, and Department 3300, account 3200 by $127,000?
How did you read my mind like that?
Lucky guess.
Yeah, I'm sure you'll get that to Ashley later, since that came quickly. But yes.
I will second that motion.
Discussion?
No, I'm, I'm okay with the, adding the T O T thing as long as it's just set aside. I want to see the presentation before we fund it. It's, but I'm okay with it.
Any further discussion or subsequent motion? All right. Ashley can pull the board.
Chairman Cox?
I.
Supervisor Luke Wyler?
I.
Supervisor Frasier?
I.
Thank you for all of your preliminary work, C A O, Tethill, in your organizational strategy. This was a lot easier than I anticipated it going. So I really appreciate your efforts.
And just to add that, I, I really appreciate that, the thoughtful process that you went through so that, you know, we, we can, as you described it, rely on the wisdom that you and the department heads put into figuring out, how do you get 12 million down to three point something? So I agree. Thank you.
Well, those, those other eight million or so is still there.
Why not? You didn't manage them away.
They haven't gone away. They're still there. And we will still be coming to ask for those funds in different forms and fashions.
There you go. Thank you.
All right. All right. So item 5.4, award above board construction and roofing incorporated, doing businesses A B C Roofing and Solar. The contract for the Trinity County Courthouse Roof Replacement Project and authorize the C A O to sign any amendments or change orders as needed. $304,285 from the Capital Building Program Department 1810. C A O, Tethill.
Thank you, Chair. So we, we kind of talked about this a little bit already, but this is the actual contract with A B C Roofing to perform the repairs on the courthouse. There is about that, you know, 10, 11% or so contingency fund in there. And then also part of the, the project is going to be replacing the sprinkler heads within the, the building itself. Those need to be certified every five years. Typically they're good life, lifespan for 30 ish. We're at the 50 year ish point on ours right now. So we're not able to get them recertified anymore and we need to, to do that as well. So that's why you see the full 300 and you know, 54,000 in the L A T C F funds. And then this amount is only asking for 304. There, there is a, that's why there's a, a difference there. But this is the, again, this is the actual contract versus the budget allocation that we're asking for. This.
With that budget allocation that we just provided, if you needed the extra 50,000, would you have to come back or you have it?
No, we've got it. So that's what, that's what I'm asking for is to you give me the authority to, to sign up to that 354 if we have any contingencies or any other changes above and beyond this 304 right now.
Any other questions? All right. We'll open this for public comment. Any in the room? And any on Zoom?
I have no raised hands, no chance.
All right. Bring them back to the board and routine a motion.
I move to approve as presented.
Right. So motion by Supervisor Luke Wyler, second by Supervisor Frasier.
Supervisor Frasier.
I.
Supervisor Luke Wyler.
I.
Chairman Cox.
Hi. All right. Planning and zoning, item 5.5, approve an agreement with TransCon Environmental Incorporated to provide site services, environmental feasibility study and permit services, and authorize the C A O to sign for expenditures from the local area technical assistance grant. No impact to the general fund expenditures total from L E D A grant, $373,500. And from this, I believe interim deputy director, Presley, yes? Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair, Board. I'm Ed Presley, the interim deputy director of building and planning. And this is simply the next step in getting the lotto grant utilized. So this is basically the contract for being able to enter into with TransCon so that we can start work on this. And they said, as soon as this is signed, we can begin moving. And it's also for the C A O to be able to sign any next, next steps of expenditures with the grant. So no impact to general fund and Connie Stewart should be on Zoom to give a small presentation.
Hello, Connie. Nice to see you.
Hi there. And my apologies for once again, virtually talking to you instead of being in the board table with you. I so look forward to coming over and seeing all of your legs one day. So first of all, let me just start by thanking you all for giving me an opportunity to speak. And I want to thank Supervisor Cox too. She convened us earlier, or well, I guess last fall to begin talking about the opportunities for additional funding that could come to the region for broadband. And there's really a lot of funding, almost $6 billion of funding coming through California to make sure that we can get broadband to all people, no matter how remote folks are. And so those programs are sort of, for the purposes of this conversation, I'm going to divide them into two conversations. One is around a middle mile that has open access that it would, that is coming through, it's the major highways. And then working in the communities to figure out last mile options for getting the most remote and folks that have not been served in the past service. And so the, the middle mile that's coming through is Highway 299, Digital 299, and that's being worked on right now. Permits are being issued by both Caltrans District One and District Two, and that project is being built. And so Supervisor Cox, when she convened your staff and me and also. Um, and so Supervisor Cox, when she convened your staff and me and um, also providers, Velocity was there as well. We looked at, well, where where, how could we benefit off that middle mile of two ninety-nine to serve folks? And so we picked um, the High and Palm region, Post Mountain region. Um, and be, let me just say, uh, because there's a lot of efforts going on right now uh, around like, what is the best thing to do? On the state gave fifty million dollars, uh, put aside fifty million dollars for local technical assistance. Um, we chose to use that funding to look not only at routes to some of the most uh, remote areas, but also to look at the envi- what it would take to get the environmental permits um, in those areas. Uh, in our region, you could draw a lot of lines on the map, but
Connie, can you hear me now? Oh, good. We have been through probably twenty or thirty seconds where you couldn't hear us, and maybe ten of those seconds we couldn't hear you. I apologize.
Oh, no, sorry.
Think, no, it's not your fault at all. I think we have our issue resolved, and so I'm not exactly sure how to rewind you thirty seconds. Um, the last thing I think I heard you say before my brain went offline was we were back to looking at how we could benefit, and then you kind of moved forward with your specifics.
Okay, well, okay, how we could benefit from that middle mile?
There we go. Thank you.
To uh, to getting folks served um, in um, in the most remote areas of Trinity County. And so Supervisor Cox convened uh, us. We met with Velocity and uh, your staff, and I was in the room as well, and talked about how we could maybe create a small middle mile to get those last mile people served. And so um, in our region, as you well know, the geography is very challenging, and environmental permitting is very challenging. So you can't just draw a map, straight map. You need to understand uh, what it's going to take to get environmental permits to serve areas. And so that led us to using the local technical assistance funding that the state was offering and grants, not only to like, figure out those routes, but also figure out what it would take to get the preliminary environmental look at which route would be feasible and um, and and we would be capable of getting permits. And so that's what's before you today is that um, that effort um, with TransCom to uh, to look at how to get High and Palm, Post Mountain, and and beyond uh, in that region served. Uh, because that's the area specifically of Trinity County that has the least amount of service options available to them. Um, why don't I stop there and um, and and just say that, well, what, before I stop, why don't I just say the timing of this grant is crucial? Because we think sometime in the late summer, early fall, uh, the funding for actually paying for the routes will start to trickle out, and so the this um, technical assistance will help us to figure out how to best serve those regions.
Okay, thank you, and I would love to add um, that without Connie's assistance, without the background work that she and Velocity have done in years past, we would have been rather lumped into the entire sheepfold of counties for whom it made sense to move forward kind of in a collective manner, and um, we're very unique, our topography, our history. And so, and it was really uncomfortable, I will say, to kind of be that black sheep moving through those things, but she knew what had been done and what was best and what we needed, and we wouldn't be having this opportunity right now had we taken the more generalized route.
Yeah, I I would just like to thank Connie as well and and her efforts, and also Ed and and his staff, because we have been meeting uh, each week with TransCom and Connie and others to continue this process along, and uh, as part of this grant approval and, you know, signatory today on it, we wanted to have Connie come on and just kind of give the board and the public a little general update as far as, you know, where we're at today, uh, because there has been lots of work going on behind the scenes to get us there, and I think we are making good progress to position ourselves for potential, you know, future funding uh, for some of our underserved or not served at all populations.
Yeah. All right, any questions?
No.
You're thinking? Dan has a question.
I have some questions, but I think they're for later. Just
Can I say one more thing?
Yeah, later.
Sure, go ahead. Yeah.
One more thing to Supervisor Cox's um, comments. We, one of the things that's unique about our region is we have s- um, some homegrown um, internet businesses. A lot of other rural counties only have the legacy companies as options. And so they are looking at creating municipality, uh, mis- municipality-owned broadbands or bringing in another provider. We didn't want to undercut our homegrown providers. So we went a different route, and the route is, we still want access to those funds. We still want to to take advantage of technical assistance, but we really want to help our homegrown businesses grow broader, not bring someone over the top of them. And so that's the, that was the uncomfortable. We we were pioneering our own route in order to keep our locally grown businesses healthy.
Nice. Thank you for that clarity. Yep.
I I would just also like to add to that statement that we are still moving forward in a competitive environment, and there is no pre-selection of who future service providers will be. Uh, there is always an opportunity for other service providers to come in and provide these these services based upon their own business models. Uh, even though our opportunities are, are our options are fairly limited in our rural area, we are in no way pre-selecting or doing anything for any particular uh, service provider in our area.
Yep, a hundred percent. This open access is um, exactly what that means, is that there is opportunity for whomever would like to um, take advantage of those opportunities. So, yes. All right, with that, we will open this item for public comment. Any in the room? And seeing none, any on Zoom?
I have no raised hands, no chance.
Right, close public comment and bring it back to the board.
Motion to approve as presented.
I'll second.
Right, motion by Supervisor Lutwiler, second by Supervisor Frasier.
Supervisor Frasier?
Aye.
Supervisor Lutwiler?
Aye.
Chairman Cox?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Right, item five point six probation, approve a budget adjustment for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three for probation, Department twenty-four hundred, increasing services and supplies by twenty-six thousand, one hundred twenty-six dollars, and approve a budget adjustment for fiscal year twenty-twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-three for general fund contingency, Department nine-nine-zero-one, decreasing provisions for contingency by twenty-six thousand, one hundred twenty-six dollars. Increase in general fund appropriations in the amount of twenty-six thousand, one hundred twenty-three dollars. Current balance in contingency is one hundred thirty-four thousand, seven hundred eighty-five dollars. Um, do we have probation chief Fero? Or are you speaking?
Chair, this is the one we had to pull, um, because we only have, we don't have a for fist. Uh, so in addition to the consent items, this is the one we had to pull. So this one will be pushed until the eighteenth of July.
All right, and because it's agendized, do we have to take an action step to move it forward?
Nope, you're good.
All right, thank you.
And the timing is this one can wait till?
It 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 can. I talked to Ruby.
Okay, I thought maybe it didn't.
Yes, we're, we're
And if it can't.
It's close, but we'll, we'll figure it out, and if we have to do something on an emergency basis or on a special BD basis before the eighteenth, we will do that.
All right, thank you. Um, all right, so uh, before we move into closed session, I uh, failed to report out on our closed session item on our June sixth regular meeting, so I will do that now. Uh, it was item five point one, Government Code Section five-four-nine, five-four-point-five-C, Conference with Legal Counsel, Existing Litigation, Number of Cases, One, Carlson et al versus County of Trinity et al, Trinity County Superior Court Case, Number two-zero, CV one-three-six, direction was given to staff. For today, our closed session, item six point one, Government Code Section five-four-nine, five-four-point-five-F, Conference with Labor Negotiators, Counties Designated Representatives, Margaret Long and Susie Hawkins, Employee Organizations, General Unit and Management and Confidential Unit. Is there any public comment on this item? Seen none in the room?
I have no raised hands, no chance.
All right, we will close public comment, and we will close the open session portion of this meeting and move into closed session.